Hi, everyone. Good evening. Welcome. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, April 11, 2023. I call this meeting to order. Leslie, may you call the role for commissioners who are here, present and not?
Yes. Commissioner Mercado is absent today. Commissioner Privatalli?
Here.
Commissioner Samudzi is absent today. Commissioner Shock?
Here.
Vice Chair Hafeman?
Here.
And Chair Saudi?
Here. Now on to the order of the agenda. Are there any commissioners who'd like to request changes to the order of the agenda? Okay, well, we'll move on to the meeting procedures. The City of San Rafael remains committed to, for all to participate in real time, whether that is from here in the chamber or from the comfort of their own home. I want to welcome all that are making the time this evening to participate. Each member of the public will be provided two minutes for comment. This will ensure we have the opportunity to hear from everyone. Leslie, can you tell us how public comment is going to work this evening?
Yes, thank you, Chair Saudi. The meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube and through Zoom, and viewers can provide comments by telephone by calling 669-444-9171 and entering the meeting ID, which is 815-0028-1975. Or you might comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If you wish to speak during the public comment period and are participating virtually, use the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen, or if you're phoning in, by pressing star nine. Folks, attending in person will speak first, and followed by those participating remotely. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a timer to help you stay within the allotted timeframe, which, again, for tonight, is two minutes. You are invited, though not required, to introduce yourselves and say what part of San Rafael you reside in, or if from outside San Rafael. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. Select the live transcript bottom button, excuse me, on the Zoom to enable this feature. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie, are we having the Spanish translation? You went through that?
No, not tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the following is a refresher on our meeting procedures. We'll begin with the staff report, followed by a presentation from the applicant team. Commissioners will then have the opportunity to ask questions of staff and the applicant. I ask the commissioners to make an effort to ask the entirety of their questions during this time prior to the close of public hearing. Members of the public will then be invited to speak. You will have two minutes for public comment. We will start with those present in the chamber and then to those that are participating virtually. After public comment, I will close a public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for any discussion prior to requesting a motion and vote. Next on the agenda is urgent communication. This is a time for anyone with urgent communication on a topic not on the agenda to address the commission. Are there any members of the public that have urgent communication tonight?
If you're wishing to speak on something that is not on the agenda, please step up to the podium, or if you are participating remotely, please use the raise the hand icon, or if you're phoning in, please dial star nine. And it looks like no one is wishing to comment.
Thank you, Leslie. We'll now move on to the consent calendar, which has one item: Approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of March 28, 2023. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar?
Again, if you're wishing to speak on the consent calendar and you're in the chambers, please walk up to the podium. If you're participating remotely, please use the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen or press star nine if you are phoning in. And no one wishes to speak on the consent calendar.
Okay, great. Are there any comments or edits from the commission? Anybody? Okay. Can I get a motion on this item? Please give your name prior to the motion in a second.
This is John Privatalli. I'll move to accept the consent calendar.
This is Commissioner Hafeman. I will second the motion.
Would any of the commissioners like to discuss the motion? Okay. Moved and seconded. Can we get the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Mercado is absent. Commissioner Privatalli?
Aye.
Commissioner Samudzi is absent. Commissioner Shock? And Vice Chair Hafeman?
Yes.
And Chair Saudi?
Yes. Now, on to the only action item on tonight's agenda: Request for environmental and design review permit for the proposed mixed-use building at 1515 Fourth Street. Can we get the staff report, please?
And I would like to just introduce, I think he's been here before, but for those who haven't, this is Jeff Ballantyne. He is one of our senior planners and has been shepherding this project through the entitlement process.
Yes, good evening, planning commissioners. So this project before you tonight is for a new mixed-use building at 1515 Fourth Street. The entitlement, requested entitlement, is a major environmental and design review permit. So the project site is surrounded by Shaver Street, Fourth Street, and E Street, as well as two commercial buildings to the south. Currently, there's a vacant bank building on the site, and the site is approximately 38,500 square feet in area. So the proposed project includes 162 residential units and approximately 8,900 square feet of ground floor commercial space. The northern face of the building facing Fourth Street is seven stories, and then there's a portion of the southwest corner of the building that is eight stories. 119 of the units would have one bedroom, and the remaining 43 units would have two bedrooms. And then the project would also include, of those 162 units, 13 of those units would be below market rate for very low-income households. So the lower two floors, Level P2 and Level P1 in the plans, they are primarily subterranean garages, each with a driveway onto Shaver Street, and they combined consist of 179 vehicle parking spaces, 205 bicycle parking spaces, and a trash room. The ground level includes retail space, gallery space, a couple of club rooms, nine residential units, as well as an outdoor pool and courtyard area. And then levels two through seven have the remaining 153 units. And then I just want to show on Level Seven, the top floor, they have proposed two roof decks, as well as a lounge, and this is on the southwest corner of the building. In terms of architectural details, so the project includes articulation in the forms of building recesses and projections, variation in color, as well as variation in materials. So, for instance, the front northern elevation you see here appears to have five vertical columns in light tan stucco, while the remaining portion of the building is recessed in a light umber stucco color. Most of Level Seven on the top floor is also recessed in the light umber stucco, so it gives a different look for the top level. And then as well, on the ground level, it's primarily consisting of glass windows and storefronts, such that it's distinct from the rest of the building. In addition, there are balconies, as well as recessed windows, to provide further articulation. And I'll just briefly go through the elevations. So here's the north elevation facing Fourth Street, the east elevation facing E Street, the west elevation facing Shaver Street, and then finally, the south elevation. And then this is a building section, just to give you a sense of how those two subterranean garages are working in relation to the grade, and then with the seven levels above those two garages. And then in terms of landscaping, so they're proposing a number of street trees. Some examples include crepe myrtle, oak, and maple, all of which are on the city's approved street tree list. They have proposed landscaping on all three street frontages, as well as landscaping on the interior courtyard area. The project would also include installing four new steel benches in the public right-of-way. So you see here on the plans, there's this L-shaped bench right here and another one right here in this sort of recessed seating area, as well as another bench over here on one side and the other bench over here on the other side. And then, in addition, they're proposing eight tubular steel bicycle parking racks all in the right-of-way on Fourth Street as well. So I want to spend some time talking about state density bonus law. So this law allows for a project that provides a minimum percentage of affordable units to seek waivers and concessions to applicable development standards, as well as increased residential density beyond what a local jurisdiction allows. And so, since in the downtown precise plan, which this project site is in, there are no maximum residential densities, the way that we go about this process is that we have the applicant provide what's called a base density project. And so this is a project that essentially is a hypothetical one that complies with all the development standards. And so based on that, we get a sense for how many units could be provided on the site, and these units have to have a comparable average unit size as the actual proposed project. And so as part of this analysis, and this is on the third page of the plans, they've demonstrated the base project of 122 residential units. And since they're providing 10% of those units, they're providing 13 units at very low income, they are allowed to get a 32.5% density bonus increase. So if you multiply that by 122, you get an additional 40 units. So you get, they're allowed to have 162 residential units on the site. In addition, they're able to get as many waivers as they want and two concessions. And what a waiver is, is essentially it's any development standard that physically precludes the construction of the development at the density permitted. So any development standard that would preclude them from being able to do those 162 units. And then a concession is just simply any reduction in site development standards or any modification in zoning or architectural design requirements. So for this site, most of the project site is in the T4 MS 5070 district in our downtown precise plan. And then there's just a small portion of it in the T4N 4050 district in the southwestern portion of the site, and that's shown in the staff report. The project seeks one concession for the requirement to provide 1,000 square feet of civic open space. And then they're also seeking waivers for maximum building height, minimum building setbacks, as well as specifically setbacks, setback standards in the T4N district. And so staff has reviewed their submittal and confirmed that it does meet all the requirements for density bonus law, both in the state law and in the city's requirements. And I also want to touch on another state law. It's the Housing Accountability Act. And so cities may not deny or reduce the density of a project unless they can find, supported by substantial evidence that the project would have a specific adverse impact on the public health or safety. So staffs reviewed this and identified that no public health or safety impacts have been identified. Planning Commission may only place conditions on the project that are based on adopted objective development standards. And so I have the definition of what objective means per state law, and it's basically no personal or subjective judgment, and being uniformly verifiable by reference to an external uniform benchmark. So typically, it's a numerical standard, so something that's very obvious, black and white. This is a requirement, and this is how you can achieve that requirement. So for the downtown precise plan, Division 3.2 of the plan, it includes massing and facade articulation standards. And so this is really where you're going to find all of the relevant objective development standards for projects in the downtown precise plan, other than things like maximum height or setbacks or building setbacks. So just to briefly go over them, it's, one of them is requiring that there be a tripartite facade articulation, so basically that there's a very distinct base, middle, and top. Also requirements about window bays and openings based on prevalent patterns, that there needs, also needs to be a corner element that gives visual importance to the corner, and then finally, including projected or recessed window bays. And so on March 7, the designer view board reviewed the project, and on their determination, the project met all of these, except they felt, except for corner elements. And so they recommended planning commission approval of the project with the condition that the project revised the colors and/or materials of the corner elements facing Fourth Street, as well as the center column as well. And just briefly, you know, the city council goals, there's really four key goals the city council has adopted, and creating new housing, and particularly new affordable housing, is one of those four key things. And so this project does provide new housing, as well as 13 new affordable units. And also just to mention, you know, the downtown precise plan was adopted by the city with the intent of accommodating higher-density mixed-use development in the city's downtown. And this was, you know, a plan that was developed over a three-year process with quite substantial public meetings, community meetings, and public hearings as well. And then, in talking with one of the commissioners, we want to make just a few changes to the resolution, mainly cleanup items, just to sort of improve it. And so in front of you all, I have printed a copy with track changes shown. So this is one of them. On page one, it's the first whereas. In red text, it's just adding that the project is seeking concession waivers pursuant to state density bonus law. And then on page two, under letter C for the environmental findings, letter A, there is, add a language here in red shown here that's just basically, again, saying that the project's seeking concessions pursuant to state density bonus law, and that that still does not render the infill exemption inapplicable pursuant to CEQA. And then finally, on page three, just adding some language there for traffic, indicating that the project's consistent with the downtown precise plan EIR, that it's not required to provide vehicle miles traveled analysis, and that also, while the traffic analysis for the project does provide level of service data for two intersections, the project actually was not required to do so, because in the downtown precise plan, level of service is not required. It's a general plan policy. But just wanted to highlight that as well. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project for the reasons provided. And I do understand there's been significant community input, as you've received a lot of letters over the past week, a lot of concern around, you know, the overall height of the building and things like traffic. But again, pursuant to state law, and the project's really demonstrated that the project can be that height, and that the city really does not have the ability to reduce the overall size of the project. So that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is prepared to provide a presentation as well.
Are we getting the applicant?
It's up to you if you all would like to ask questions now, or...
Sorry, we'll save questions till after the applicant's...
Yeah, yeah. If we can hear from the applicant right now, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, commissioners, for your time this evening, and thank you to staff for your hard work on this important project. Excuse me. My name is Tom Monahan. I'm president of Monahan Pacific Corporation. Over the past 35 years, we've been building award-winning projects in San Rafael. We're currently wrapping up construction on the AC Marriott Hotel, which is on Fifth and B Street. I'm sure you've seen that going up. And that's scheduled to open in June, so we're very excited to bring that resource to the city. Excuse me. The project before you tonight is another step in the revitalization of downtown. 1515 Fourth Street will bring much-needed housing and economic vitality to the central core of downtown. This project is a result of years of planning efforts, not just by us, but by community stakeholders, community members, local businesses. The planning commission and city council have all weighed in on this vision for San Rafael. The project embraces the vision of the 2040 general plan, the downtown precise plan, the city's housing element, and it's consistent with many of the goals and objectives in the city's plan for revitalizing the downtown. The revised design, excuse me. The project helps to provide a portion of 3,200 residences that are required by RENA, providing 162 units, 13 below-market-rate units for very low-income families. The project is affordable by design and seeks to serve as workforce housing to the community. The project provides a 1,600-square-foot gallery space on the mid-block of Fourth Street. And this is a kind of an art gallery space that we have designed in order to try to connect a, an opportunity for local artists to present their art in a quasi-public forum. And that space will be open to the public for various events during the course of the project. The project also provides substantial economic benefits to the city and the community, both in the short-term and long-term benefits. Over the last two years, the project has gone through an evolution of design. And let's see if I, I don't know, Jeff, if you can put up our, one of our slides. I think maybe the next slide. Right. So I just wanted to point out that the project before you is not, is not the first version of the project, but in fact, working from the left to right, if I can point out, the, this, this first analysis was done back in 2021, and that analysis sought to maximize the number of units that would be possible under the state density bonus laws. And in that version of the project, there were 234 units and 11 stories. As part of our ongoing engagement with the community and outreach, we spoke to many residents and many downtown businesses. And with their input, we, even though that this design was permitted under the state density bonus laws, the community felt that it was too large. And so we embarked on a, on an effort to reduce the size. And so the second, second diagram shows a reduced-size project, and that project is 207 units and nine stories. And as we, you know, had our focus groups and spoke to people, we got feedback that that was still, you know, a large project. And we agreed. We understand the context of San Rafael. We've been developing in San Rafael for years, and we're really trying to find the right balance of a project. So we continued in our design effort, and we came up with a third design. And this, this design here was 191 units and eight stories tall. Again, we got feedback that folks felt that was, you know, that was too big. And so the final design, which is before you tonight, which is this version, is 162 units, which is a reduction of units of 70, a lower number of units, 72, and a reduced floor area from, of four floors, from 11 to seven, from the original design. And so this current design is, is really... And so this current design is is really as small as we can go economically and to justify the investment on a project. So I just wanted to, you know, mention our design team is here tonight to present the the project in detail. We ask for your support and to approve the project tonight and to move this project toward the fulfillment of the downtown vision. I want to introduce Riley Hurd, who's standing by on Zoom, to speak about the project's compliance with the state density bonus laws. We also welcome any questions that you have. And we're here to, you know, answer any questions. And we really appreciate your help and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom. And good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Riley Hurd. I'm a San Rafael resident, and I operate my law practice right here in downtown, where I specialize in density bonus law and the Housing Accountability Act. Wanted to say a few words about the new world order of planning we find ourselves in. Specifically, courtesy of the state, the review of projects like this one is now highly constrained. The days of subjective review are over, and density is now all but guaranteed. And this is really decades of no coming home to roost in the form of public policy. Some people are frustrated by this transfer of local control, while many others celebrate it in light of the housing crisis. But the law is clear, and the courts have said, don't come to us if you don't like it, vote for someone else. But it's very important to recognize that the city said, this property is where high density goes. The city assigned the T45070 zoning designation, which is one of the highest designations in the Precise Plan. And this was part of a three year public planning process with extensive stakeholder participation and no opposition to that zoning being applied to this property. So with the zoning in place, only objective standards may serve to reduce or deny the project. And Jeff read the definition. It's worth focusing in on it again. Those standards are ones that involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external benchmark. So staff made the objective analysis as part of the report. The DRB then looked, they agreed. So if the code is truly objective, it's kind of tough to have disagreement now. And I think that makes this hearing and hearings like this a little bit confusing, because I I bet a number of folks are here to share their subjective opinions. But the zoning is in place, and now the state law controls. Furthermore, projects are entitled to unlimited waivers, as we heard from anything that precludes them from reaching their maximum density. So the state has really prioritized housing. You know, you heard this project has a base density of 122 units. And here, the applicant has only sought a 32% density bonus, even though 50% is allowed as a matter of right under state law. So they left 21 units on the table in favor of the reduced height. They've also elected to provide 179 parking spaces, and the state density bonus law only requires 103. So in conclusion, it's it's tough. But for the folks that say, we want housing, just not here, that's the refrain of the past 30 years, and that's what got us where we are. It's time to move forward. And tonight, we'd ask that the commission confirm compliance with the objective standards and approve this project for much needed housing. And hopefully, and this is a personal hope of mine, to start bringing some more vitality into the downtown. So with that, we'll turn it over to Isaiah Stackhouse, who is the project architect. And I will be available on Zoom if any legal or project questions arise. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thanks, Riley and Tom. And I'll try to keep this brief. Jeff already gave a great overview of the project and project plans. So again, I'll try to keep it brief. But next slide. So here's a site plan with E Street, Fourth and Shaver. Next slide. Here's a view of Fourth Street looking west. We think it's a timeless design. It fills in what's really now a missing piece of the streetscape. It's largely a parking lot with a building setback. We think this new streetscape will help to enliven the downtown. Next slide. Here's a view of E Street looking south. Next slide. E Street looking back east in the context. And here's Shaver looking north. Next slide. And here is E Street looking north. Next slide. Here's an evening view along Fourth Street, showing the new active streetscape. We think this both provides locations for new vital businesses and restaurants, and also provides a lot of new residents to support the existing businesses. Next slide. While this project was eligible for two cost reduction concessions, we're actually using only one of them to modify the civic space to allow this to to be provided as an indoor gallery space that's very much integrated into a widened sidewalk and parklet. And while only 1,000 square feet of civic space was required, we're actually providing between the gallery and the expanded sidewalk parklet, close to 2,000 square feet. Next slide. Here's a shot from the view from the front, where the windows will open up into that gallery space to create an indoor outdoor connection to the sidewalk. The gallery, it'll provide a space for arts and entertainment. And then it'll also serve as an entry for the project, which again is providing 162 units, including 13 BMR units, which helps meet RENA goals, provide more housing choices, and to improve housing affordability. Next slide. So we're proposing a complimentary palette of rich, earthy materials, primarily two colors of EcoStucco. It's a local company here in San Rafael. And we do have a material board here we can show you with samples. So what we're trying to do is to create a really high quality building that's very carefully detailed, that will stand the test of time. Next slide. You know, so in summary, you know, as you've read in the staff report, the project is consistent with the city's planning goals and objectives. It's exempt from CEQA due to an infill exemption. It's consistent with the city's goals, objectives, and policies to promote the creation of new housing, including improving economic vitality, promoting a thriving downtown, nurturing arts and entertainment, creating more housing and housing choices, improving housing affordability. It's a project that's consistent with the 2040 General Plan, the land use, the current design and community design and zoning. It's consistent with the Downtown Precise Plan, which focuses more density in the city's downtown, complies with the Housing Accountability Act of 2019. It was unanimously recommended for approval by the Designer Review Board last month. And we think it's a project that creates timeless architecture vernacular and sets a high standard for future projects. So for those reasons, we ask that you approve the application. Next slide. Thank you, and we're here for your questions. That concludes our presentation.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. And thank you for the staff report as well, Jeff. Okay, at this time, we're going to take questions from the commissioners. And I just want to ask that you make to remind you to make an effort to ask entire dear questions. I just want to make sure that our questions are asked prior to the close of public hearing. I mean, obviously, if we need to ask more, that's fine. But I definitely want to make sure that there is like this, the community has the opportunity to like be participatory in our in what we're asking. So with that, I'll start in order we're seated. So Commissioner Shaw, can you start, can we start with your questions?
Of course. Thank you. Thank you for your presentations. I have several. So where where shall I start? My first question relates to to some traffic concerns that we're getting from across the community, especially in regards to Shaver Street. So I would love if you could just elaborate more on addressing some of those concerns that have been raised.
Yeah, so I would, a few things to talk about there. One, a traffic study and report was done and reviewed by the city and DPW and and found that there to be no no technical issues or problems for the location of the driveways and a number of spaces. And part of it also is, you know, has to do with the grades around the project. So the on E Street and Fourth, the 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 streets are level with the ground floor of the building, and then Shaver drops two stories. So on a practical basis, the
Can I just remind everyone that there is decorum? We need to be able to have the people that are speaking be heard. And that's going to be, I'm going to try to keep this as a rule for public as well. So if we can just reserve your comments from when you're here to speak, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, so on a practical basis, Shaver is the obvious place to enter because the the streets connect with both basement levels there. But again, i- independent of us, the the city, city staff, DPW, you know, has has reviewed the locations and found there to be no issue.
Right, and just that the traffic study called out for proposing removing the street parking along the Shaver Street frontage of the project site in order to improve maneuverability for for cars going in and leaving the the two driveways.
Yeah.
And in addition to that, so that that would be taking away street parking along Shaver. But the project could actually be able to add additional street parking along both Fourth Street and E Street, because there are currently driveways on both of those. So you're losing street parking on Shaver, but you're gaining street parking on Fourth Street and E Street.
Yeah, great points.
Thank you. Thank you. Another question I had is in regards to the rental units. I'm curious as to why, why the building doesn't provide condo, you know, condos for purchase in addition to rental? Just if you could elaborate more on that.
You know, it is proposed as a rental project. In general, that's fairly normal. I don't think we've ever had a project that was a combination. So it's it's quite typical, and it's, you know, the program for the project.
And then another question I had was just in regards to the target like renter for this building, who there's a great school nearby and lots of families in the West End. I live in the West End. And renters may include families. And I didn't see any, you know, parks included in any of the the design. And would love to understand kind of what your thoughts are in terms of making it inclusionary to to families who may stay there.
You know, it is a real mix of, you know, of unit sizes. You know, they're they're very generous units in general. These are not tiny micro units. You know, they're very furnishable, kitchen, living bedrooms. There are, you know, there is a sizable courtyard in the back of the project, towards the back, with with a large amount of open space. And there are as well two roof decks and expanded sidewalks. So in general, it's, it does have quite a bit of open space, and a lot of it is protected in the back courtyard there. But in terms of, you know, I think it's really aimed at at a real mix. It would be great for empty nesters. It would be great for a young family, be great for young professionals. And again, these are all, we think, very high quality units that all have very good light and air. So it's a project that really, I think, suits a wide a wide range. And it does include the the 13 below market rate units as well, which are, you know, kind of spread across the floors in the building.
One more, one more question.
Yeah, sure.
Actually, two. In regards to the the 10% of apartments being below market rate, why is it that we went with 10%? Why not, why not more potentially?
Well, you know, I think there's got to be, there's often, you know, a balance. You know, these projects have to be able to secure financing as well. And so, you know, we we see that amount vary from project to project. You know, this project, again, could provide more affordable units and become an even bigger project. But it typically, if it were to say go to 15% affordable in order to be able to secure bank financing, make the project work financially, it would go to a 50% bonus, and it would be, you know, a story or two taller. Right, and so it's sort of finding that balance between the height and, and, you know, there aren't many industries that provide 10% of what they make for, you know, below cost, right? And but that's, you know, essentially what this project is doing.
Thank you. And then just one last, there were some some great public comments in regards to installing rooftop solar panels. And what are we, what are we doing in order, you know, what are you doing to make it environmentally friendly? And would love to hear just a little bit more about that.
Yeah, so, you know, we do see this as a as a very green building. You know, just in the biggest picture, it's in a walker's paradise. You know, it's in a fantastic location. You know, it'll meet, you know, the the building standards these days are just incredible in terms of how green any new building is compared to the old housing stock. And it 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 will, you know, it will have EV charging, you know, for cars. And I don't, I don't think we've gotten to the level of detail yet of, you know, sizing solar equipment and that and that sort of thing. But but, you know, by its by its very nature and its location, this will be a very, very green building.
Very much push push for that. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Commissioner Heidman?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation is very helpful. I do have a few questions. One is in terms of the the target renter, what, in what range do you anticipate the rents falling in?
I don't have any idea. I mean, I think that's something that'll come later.
There's been no contemplation of the level of rent that?
I don't, I don't have any idea as architect. And
Okay.
I mean, in in general, you know, what we try to do as a firm, you know, as as we work on more projects, create more housing, you know, create more supply, and and costs come down. So that's in, you know, overall intention.
I I understand, but there's an element of what you, how you design each unit that's going to define what price range it falls in. But if if you don't have an answer, that's
Yeah, I don't have an answer. I'm sorry.
That's fine. With respect to the below market rate units, you mentioned that they're going to be throughout. So at the end of the day, we'll find them on the first floor and on the on the seventh or eighth floor.
Yeah, so they're 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 spread throughout the floors of the building. And, you know, and the the rents are, you know, sort of established at the at the, you know, by by county area median income. So that's not set by the project sponsor. That's that's sort of done through the county and city offices.
Right, and and are these units static and designated? Or will they vary over time?
The intention is they're static and designated in this project, yeah.
Okay. With with regards to bicycles, you have a lot of bicycle storage in the basement.
That's correct.
Is there any accommodation for bicycle entry and exit? Or is that just co-mingled with the car entry and exit?
Well, I think, you know, bikes can come and go through a couple of routes. You know, certainly if you're biking on the on the street, you know, you can you can pull them to the garage that way. There are also pedestrian entrances, pedestrian doors into the garages. And then presumably, you could get there through the main lobby as well, down the elevator.
Okay, I've just lived in in apartments where there was, you know, bicycle and car entry and exit, and it can be a little harrowing sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, but but again, yeah, there are pedestrian entrances at both both garage levels as well.
Okay. I do have a concern about the traffic analysis. I don't know that there's anybody here who can speak to that. But when it showed But when it showed traffic flow resulting from the development, it didn't show any flow heading south on Shaver Street. Is that, is that a misreading of the traffic analysis?
No, and I, I can speak to that. So as I was trying to elaborate in my presentation, level of service analysis actually was not required for this project because it's in the downtown precise plan and because it's in what's called the low VMT area. It also was excluded from needing to provide that analysis. And so they actually went above and beyond just by showing those two intersections. And so based on any of the findings in there, the city wouldn't really be able to require anything because we don't have objective standards that relate to those matters as well.
Understood. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah.
I, I think that's it for me for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Haidman. Commissioner Privatoli, would you like to ask any questions?
Sure. So, yeah, first of all, this is a question for the city. I can ask you questions. Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out what sort of leverage we have. It seems like from the proposed resolution, it's about whether or not we approve the SEQA. The SEQA application or the, the SEQA, sorry. Yeah, the SEQA, I guess it would be application.
Right, yeah, the, the infill exemption, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, basically, what's before you is providing input on anything that relates to objective development standards. And so those were provided on one of the slides. And so it's things regarding the massing that, that are included in the downtown precise plan. So it is a very, very limited scope as relates to any changes that could affect the, the building form. But yeah, also the, the infill exemption is part of your staff report packet and part of the resolution as well, absolutely.
Could you elaborate on the infill exemption?
I'm just going to add just a couple of words about the SEQA analysis. So in 2021, the city council adopted a EIR related to the general plan, 2040, as well as the downtown precise plan. And with that EIR, they, so, so the, the SEQA exemption is relied on the fact that we've already done a, a general plan and downtown precise plan EIR. The city council identified the downtown area as a location for increased densities and an expectation that this is where development would occur. So there's that component of it. And the second component is just that it qualifies for an exemption under, under SEQA as an infill, infill development. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
No, yeah, and then that just the actual memorandum that's included as an exhibit just goes into pretty good thorough detail of, of why this project meets all the required findings. And one of, and one of the brilliant, the main ones is that the project is, would not have an adverse impact on traffic noise, air quality or water, water quality. And so that it goes through each of those to discuss essentially why the project meets all the relevant thresholds.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a behemoth of a building. I mean, I have to say it's very large and I, it does appear to be consistent.
I wanted to just, I think we're going to have our comments later.
I'm about to ask a question, yeah. So my question for the city with that context, thank you, is, you know, is the, the vision for this area for there to be other large buildings around it that would relatively speaking sort of make this building more consistent with other buildings over time?
Yes, so as I was saying, the, the city council adopted a downtown precise plan. Jeff mentioned the amount of time that was put into preparation of the downtown precise plan and the amount of public input that we received during that process. We had public participation downtown. We have had a couple of charrettes sessions in the downtown area with a number of people showing up, participating, providing input and, and their ideas. And yeah, ultimately, the vision for the downtown is to allow for increased heights and increased densities and intensities as well. So this is, you know, a, a new project with a lot of height. There's an expectation that we'll see more of that in the downtown. And as you get closer to the smart station, you'll see more height.
Okay, and just sort of pulling on that thread, I just wanted to confirm that, I think there was a statement that there was no opposition to the height, but is that correct? There was no opposition to the height as part of the downtown precise plan planning process?
So the downtown precise plan, I, I, I'm not sure that I can with full confidence say that there was no opposition to height in the downtown, but there was an expectation that there would be height in the downtown.
Okay, I understand. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let's, let's leave our comments. You're welcome to come up later on, but let's just leave our comments for, for when we're.
Yeah, understood. And then another question I have related to the height is that, you know, are there any buildings around that area that are protected through historic preservation?
Yeah, absolutely. As part of the downtown precise plan, there was a thorough historic analysis that was done of essentially every property within the area. And so as a result, there were quite a few properties and buildings that were deemed of historic significance or deemed potentially historic. So absolutely, that was part of the process.
Where are they in proximity to this building?
I'd have to pull up a, a map, but this, this was not one of the sites, yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right. The next question I have is, so there's going to be time for a public comment.
We're all going to have an opportunity to speak and we have to respect Commissioner Privatoli's time. If you could.
I'll try to.
Please be patient and you'll definitely get your turn.
And I'll try to speed it up. So the next question is about parks. I, I thought that you had a great question about the parks or the, the open space and access to parks and whatnot. And I'm just wondering, did the city do any sort of review of parks nearby that, you know, would provide access to more, to more open space in proximity and walking proximity? Was that a consideration?
Well, oh sure, go for it.
So Jeff mentioned earlier that we are, our job right now with this type of project is to evaluate the objective standards that have been put in place under the downtown precise plan. So there are, there is a mention of civic space in the downtown precise plan and the applicants are obligated to the 1,000 square feet of civic space.
Yeah.
However, with this application, we also saw a state density bonus application, which allows for additional densities as well as a reduction in, as well as waivers and concessions, which allows reductions in the development standards and requirements. So it was evaluated in that way, but there's, you know, we have, we're limited in what we can require, request of the applicant.
But as I recall, part of the, isn't it true that part of the downtown precise plan was consideration of open space in proximity to buildings in the downtown area, right?
Right, civic space is.
Civic space, okay. Okay, so about the civic space, is that the, is that the art space that applicant talked about?
So.
Civic space, yeah.
So basically, that, that civic space is indoors. And so the city is deeming that that does not comply with the requirements for civic space because that's supposed to be open to the sky, it's supposed to be outdoors.
Okay.
And so that's why they need the concession for state density bonus law to basically not comply with that requirement. But what the applicant is indicating is that while they don't meet the requirement and they're getting a concession through state density bonus law, they are still attempting to achieve that in, by, by providing it indoors and in another, in another means.
And is there, is there going to be any sort of obligation for them to ensure that it's accessible to the public during certain hours and over the course of time?
No, because again, so this is, they're, they're getting a concession through state density bonus law from that requirement. And so we can't place any conditions on their, what they're calling their civic space because it's actually not part of any of the requirements. It's not part of any objective standard, if that makes sense.
Okay, and so just to, to be completely clear, we can't compel them to have it be accessible to the public?
Correct.
Okay, that's too bad. Sorry, that was a comment instead of a question. Okay, my next question is about parking. So 179 car spaces for 162 units. And is there any way that we can compel them to add more parking spaces?
No, so they're, they're providing more than what's mandated by the downtown precise plan. And so we can't require them to provide more than that because they're meeting their, their required minimums.
Can we, can we compel them to add, to ensure there are EV chargers or electric vehicle, sorry, electric bike chargers, like plugins for electric bikes?
Not if, no, because we don't have an objective standard. So if the city wanted to adopt a requirement,
Yeah.
then that's the way we would do that for future projects.
Okay, go ahead, Ali.
Yeah, I was going to just add that under the building code, there is a percentage required. So we would be able to, required and, and under the building code, not under the downtown precise plan, but the building process will allow that to kind of play out.
Okay, well, that's good.
For, yeah, for vehicles.
Okay, great. And you mentioned that there are going to be some public parking spots taken away on Shaver and added on Fourth and E. Do you know what the sum total of reduction or addition is?
It looked like baseline analysis, it was going to be a, a, a zero, a net zero, basically no impact. So the number of spaces that were lost were going to be gained.
Okay. Okay. And so the number of spaces that were, so it's net zero.
Right.
Okay, got it, okay. So here. One last question, is there any way that we can compel the applicant to add any public art?
Not without an adopted objective standard. So if the city wanted to, the city council wanted to adopt such a requirement, that is the means by which we would do that for future projects.
Okay, great, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Privatoli. So I have a couple of questions for the project sponsor. Are you able to come up and answer some questions, please? I had a question regarding the performer. So it was said that there is no range. We were provided answer that the architect was unable to provide a range for the rental, the, the rates that are, are being used for the performer. So could you speak to that and basically give us a general sense of who that target resident is going to be?
Sure, yeah, this is a great question. So for the below market rate units, these are, those are designated to serve the 50% of AMI, which is if those units were available today, a one bedroom would be about 1,500 a month. A two bedroom would be about 1,700 a month. That's based on average median income. And those are serving the very low component of that, which is that 50% or less of that median income. The other units are really designed to be market rate units. You know, we consider this to be affordable by design and to be targeting really workforce housing. These, these are not high-end luxury, you know, penthouse type units. I think to one of the commissioners' questions about condominiums, we, we did consider that. But, you know, that, that, if you go to condominiums, the price for condominiums is extraordinarily high. And so we felt that having a rental type property was going to be more affordable. We just completed a project at Second and B Street. And those, those units, which are market rate units, one bedrooms were renting in about the 2,500 range and the two bedrooms were about 3,500. So that's kind of the, the range that we used in our model.
Okay, thank you for asking that. And I have another question. In terms of the gallery space on the ground floor, it was described as being a gallery entertainment space that the public could have access to. And do you have, like, I guess I'm trying to understand, like, what type of tenant would be able to operate that space as such? And is that going to be part of, like, I, I guess I have more questions, you know, regarding who can actually provide that? And it's a, it's a multi-pronged question. I also wanted to know if there was, if you could consider allowing that space to be used by public groups. So for instance, I know the Microsoft store isn't in Concordia anymore, but they had a public space that was able to be used. You know, there's groups. And I know, for instance, like my daughter's Girl Scout troop, we, we tried to use, like, we had to end up renting the folk, or Elks Club at a certain point because we needed space. So there are a lot of community groups that could benefit from this space if, if we were able to really have something set in place that could allow for that. So, you know, one, what kind of tenant could be there? And then two, would you consider having, you know, part of that time being allotted to public use?
Yeah, and I, I think that's a great, a great question. The issue of civic space was, was, you know, brought up in the original programming of the project. And so we tried to find a thousand square foot chunk of space that would, you know, just be open. And when, whenever we analyzed that, we realized that you've got a, a problem with vagrancy and homelessness and, you know, folks that would start, start to gather there, it would be very difficult to police that. And so we started to look for an alternative to that. And the alternative that we came up with was what we call a gallery space. And the way Isaiah's designed that is it's, it faces Fourth Street, it's got windows, the windows open, it can be open air. And our, you know, we're, we're concerned about security and managing that. So we don't see that as leased to a separate tenant. We're going to operate that as part of the management of the, of the property. But the wall space there is all designed for, you know, big white walls for gallery space. We're talking to, you know, arts downtown and other, other groups that would exhibit local artists and Girl Scout troops or, you know, whomever. So we, we see that as an opportunity to kind of show that space and, and also keep it safe and keep it well, you know, well secured. But our, our plan is to really have that to be kind of a civic space. In terms of entertainment, those windows open up. Somebody could, you know, pick up a guitar and play music. The, the outside of the gallery space, DPW has allowed us to bump out that, what was parking there. And so the sidewalk is already 12 feet wide. This gets us about, with a bump out about 20 feet wide. So that becomes kind of a mini, mini park, if you will. It's, it's not our property, but it's city property. But we think that will be a nice mid-block gathering space. And we're really trying to create kind of a fun, fun environment, but at the same time balancing security of the residents and, you know, keeping it clean and, and keeping it safe.
Yeah, I, I think that's why having like a way to, I, I understand the security concerns. And I think that's why having a way to, for the community to, like, have a process to use that space would be helpful, not only for the community, but also for, you know, as you manage the property, to make sure that it's safe and that, you know, you're kind of vetting, you know, making sure there's not security concerns for the residents. Another question I think I had for you was, we did have a letter regarding bike parking. I know that, that the person that wrote that letter asked, you know, if we could reduce parking, all sorts of stuff. But I think he did bring up a good point about e-bike parking. And I know that e-bikes are becoming a real mode of transportation. And I think one of the goals I, from this project, from the city's perspective, is to really reduce the amount of car traffic or car use, to make it a part, make downtown and housing be more pedestrian oriented and like transit oriented. So if there were e-bike parking spaces, it would be, or parking chargers, it would help allow for that to be the case. And I, I think that it would also help, you know, marketing your business case. So would you guys consider including e-bike charging within the bike parking?
Yes, I think that's a great idea. And we have a very large room for storage, parking storage, bike storage. And so I think it's an easy thing to, you know, accommodate that. Getting in and out of that area is also, you know, between pedestrians and bikes is always a challenge. But we have separate entrances at the garage to facilitate that. So bikes don't have to go, even e-bikes don't have to come in the garage door and fight against vehicular traffic. So we have taken that into consideration.
Okay, great. And I, I guess that's all I had for you, but I appreciate you coming up. Thank you. And then I have some questions for staff. So I had a question about, where do I start? You know, the requirement. You know, the requirement for affordability in the state laws. Is that, is the entire, is the development required to keep, maintain affordability for a certain amount of years? Or is that like sunset at a certain point?
It is. And I might have to lean on Ally. Is it 55 years?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, 55 years is how long they have to maintain it.
Great, thank you. And then I had another question about, it was really about that turnout on Shaver. And I know I asked you and Ally when we were preparing for this meeting about it. And I would like to know if we want to, just to let everybody else know, my concern is that turning out of the garage at this, on Shaver closest to Fourth Street might be challenging because there may not be enough room for people to turn. So is that something we would, we could work on with Public Works? I mean, it's outside of the project itself, so it's more about, you know, Public Works and how they're going to manage those intersections.
Yeah, absolutely. I spoke with Public Works earlier today about that. And, you know, they said, based on the analysis, it looked like it would be okay. But they said they're more than happy to have, you know, further conversations about it.
Okay, so that would be something we would engage Public Works on outside of the application?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I think the rest of my questions were answered. Does, does any commissioners, do you guys have any follow-up questions? I just want to make sure you all have the opportunity to ask.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
For sure.
One is actually sort of like a point of logistics, based on your question about that, that corner. Is it, should we add an amendment to the resolution? Basically compelling the city to do a study or, or something like that to make that improvement?
Well, I don't think we could tie that to the project resolution. Because again, we, we can only tie things to the project resolution that are related to objective development standards. And so we don't have a development standard. But absolutely, we can, since it's, it's public property in the public right of way anyway, that's something we can, can work with Public Works on.
Yeah.
Separate from the resolution.
Okay. But like, just logistically, would we, like, would we make a motion, for instance, to pass another resolution? Or just sort of trust that you guys are going to do it?
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to make a motion on a resolution that isn't before you tonight? And the resolution that you do have is about this project?
I understood.
And the, you know, the standards you would apply or need to be objective. But I think what Jeff is saying is that, you know, whenever we're evaluating a project, even after the planning commission review, there's a building permit process. And there's still an evaluation of the project's compliance with, you know, building code and engineering standards. And so that process will continue after this, after the decision on a project is made. So
Yeah.
If that, does that help?
Yeah, that helps. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then just my last question is actually about the rents and the demand for rent. The rents, the rent levels that you mentioned, they sound good to me. But I'm just, I do notice that there are a lot of vacancies in San Rafael, strangely, even though we have a housing crisis, which is perplexing to me. And I'm just wondering, did you guys review like a demand study as part of this project? Or is that part of the process?
No, so I think just looking at census data, I mean, I don't have exact numbers here, but vacancy rates are really low. So I'm not really sure, yeah, I, I'm not really sure where you're seeing the vacancies. But that's kind of interesting. I'd be curious to kind of have a conversation with you about that.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, what we're seeing from the census data, it's that in San Rafael vacancy rates are, are pretty low.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Any more questions? Okay, thank you. So I'm going to go on to the next. We're going to open the public hearing. So, or sorry.
Would you like me to open the public hearing?
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to get to my, the part of my script. Yeah, so can we open the public hearing at this point? And I just like, before we do that, remind the public that we do have two minutes. We definitely want to hear from you. I, I can say personally that I've read all the correspondence. And I think from speaking with the commissioners, we've, we've really made an effort to review this application thoroughly and read the correspondence. I think the last correspondence that came in was almost five o'clock. And I personally was able to read it. So I just want to ensure that we've heard, to let you guys know that we've heard, we've heard both a lot of support and a lot of opposition to the project, concerns that are, that are, I think are worth public discussion. And, you know, part of the rules of these meetings are decorum. And I think if we can just keep that in mind, because I know there's, there's a lot of heated emotions about this project in, in both ways. So just remember that we're amongst our neighbors and our community members. With that, Leslie, can you please open the public hearing?
Yes, so if you would like to speak, I know there's probably lots of you. We are going to start with people in the chambers who have made an effort to just come up to the chambers. You don't have to make a huge line, but as it starts going down, go for it. So you have two minutes.
Hi, my name's Susan Zalinski. I live on 16 G Street, just around the corner from Johnny Donuts. And I've lived there for 33 years. I rented the place for about eight years and then I bought the house. And I've raised my family there. My kids went to Sun Valley. And now I have one kid off in college and the other one is a senior at San Rafael High. Go dogs! And I, I know we need housing. And I, for one, do want to see housing there. And I think it's a nice looking building. I'm concerned about the height. Obviously, that's subjective, right? So I hear what everybody's saying, how we just need to just go ahead and push it. I am concerned about Shaver being such a narrow street. G Street, our cars get hit constantly on G Street. And Shaver is more narrow than G Street. And G Street's pretty darn narrow.
How narrow is it? Do you remember?
It's narrow. That's my husband. And so I know you said that they, they kindly did a study about the traffic and everything and the safety of it. But I just, I would love to see that study because it seems like that's, people are racing down that street and then even going right into the new intersection where they bumped out the sidewalks, which is great for public safety. But 179 cars going in and out of there, and you know there's going to be more than that. And that's my next point is that now that we're going to have all these extra cars in the neighborhood, I would really appreciate it if you guys could see to it that the locals that have lived here forever can get parking permits. We have been begging for parking permits for our cars. And we get tickets parked all the time because we've got more than one car because there's two people and we only have one parking space. So there's that. And also another point, 1618 and 1616 at the corner of Fourth and G has been vacant since I moved into my home. It is a pretend mattress store. And so seeing a behemoth of a building, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Susan.
It's a whole thing. It would, I just don't understand why it has not become something. And now that the city is making people do things to add more housing, they still have not done anything there or the old Macy's building. And that's a shame. And shame on the people who have not been doing that. I really think
Thank you, Susan.
A damn darn shame.
Thank you for your comment, Susan.
Thank you.
We have a lot of people in attendance tonight, so I do ask that you try to respect the two minutes. Actually, I do ask that you respect it. So if you see the timer, if you can just wrap up, and thank you.
My name is Brad LaRue, and I'm a business owner in San Rafael. I, we reside at 1,004 Street, and I have a private equity firm. We desperately need more housing. And I applaud the city and I applaud the state for increasing the density. And while, you know, opposition in this room may, you know, be sitting in their homes that they've owned for a long time and, and lived in San Rafael, as a, as a business owner and hiring people, there's an extreme shortage of housing. And there's not a lot of walkability. I would, I would encourage this outside this forum, but, you know, we've got a huge homeless and safety problem. Our Starbucks was closed because of safety concerns. And having more people and more walkability is a great start to the downtown. But we need to really address the homeless problem. And, you know, the, the AC Marriott is a perfect example of our consultants that come into town who need a place to stay and they can walk to our office and walk back to their hotel as long as it's safe. But this is greatly needed. We have young people that move in. And after the pandemic, they don't want to live in the city anymore. They want to live in San Rafael. And so if we can provide the level of safety and housing at an affordable price and, you know, activities to do in downtown, we can, we can attract and build a better downtown San Rafael. So this is the type of project that is in keeping with that plan that the city had when they passed this, this specific plan. So I'm in support.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Chase Greve, and our company owns the property at 830 Fifth Avenue. We're very much in support of the project. We think that this will add a significant increase to neighboring properties in the area. And I just want to say on a personal note, I've, I've lived in San Rafael for almost my whole life. San Rafael does get a little sleepy after five. I think it's exactly buildings like these that do a really good job at livening up downtown. As we're all aware, California has a huge housing crisis. And I couldn't think of a more appropriate place than a downtown area where shops, stores and everything are walkable to put additional housing. So for those reasons, we're very much in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Hey, commissioners. Thanks for having me. So I'm, my name is Zach Myers, and I live in San Francisco. And I work in Sausalito. And so I'm here today just in support of the project because I'm living right now, I grew up in Marin, in Lucas Valley. And living in San Francisco, and my girlfriend and I are wanting to move back to Marin because I had a great experience here growing up and love it. And right now, it's, I'm looking around the home prices and they're just insanely expensive. And so I think a project like this would be super helpful. I know my brother's also talking about moving into this area. And we think this would be a great spot. All my hobbies are like in the area. I can bike, surf, hike, everything's local. And I think a project like this would be super beneficial to the community. And I'll be your tenant who would probably move into this unit. I'm currently paying like 3,000 in San Francisco. So this is kind of a no-brainer. To be back home, I do it. So anyways, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Benisa Davidson. I live on G Street. And I'm not opposed to housing, but I do have a huge safety concern about this project. Shaffer Street, two new driveways eliminating on-street parking for an already unsafe hard-to-park residential neighborhood. Quote, "On-street parking eliminated to create a 22-foot road for safer conditions," end of quote. Safer means it's not quite safe now, but it will be a tad safer, but nowhere near current standards of 20 feet vehicular length each way, each way, plus four feet minimum shoulders for bicycle safety, plus minimum four foot sidewalks for ADA compliance. These are current minimum safety standards. More parking spaces are proposed and required, as Mr. Hurd mentioned. Why? And this will be for the exclusive use of the project at the cost of existing residential on-street parking. Traffic safety concludes, no pedestrian or bicyclists were observed at the intersection. This is Fourth Street, a main corridor for both. We do have bicyclists and pedestrians. Study shows 30 miles per hour, there is no signage, and therefore the default is 25 miles per hour. Please revisit traffic conclusions. I don't agree with the following. 1,482 not 8:07 daily trips. 88 not 60 new AMP trips and 121 not 61 PMP trips, according to the Institute of Traffic Engineers. Two unsignaling intersections, Shaffer, Fourth and Shaffer Latham, the latter not analyzed. Neither was Shaver in third. Most new residents will turn left to go to 101 in the morning and most will return to Shaver during PM to come home. Side access just a tad safer, not adequate. Same with circulation. If traffic study was not required, neither was level of service or vehicles, miles traveled.
Thank you if you can.
How will the city ensure traffic safety?
Thank you for your comments.
Required to grant this, at the cost of safety, the answer is no.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Hope I can get a little extra time. I'm representing 31 people that work for my company. It's Kane Stire and Mark McAlona. I've been there for 49 years. Aside from all the aesthetics of the building being outsized and oversized for the neighborhood, we're going to talk about parking, we're going to talk about safety. I am the parking expert there. I've been there 49 years. I have a garage door on Shaver Street. I can tell you what's going on. These guys don't know what happens when you head south. That was the question, had no answer. I know what happens when you go south. Between Second and Third Street, you can fit two cars. It's going to back all the way up to Fourth Street. I can tell you that I have 150 cars a day coming out my side street on the Shaver. There's accidents every day. There was a person hit in the street today. It's a safety factor that you have no idea. I am an expert on Shaver Street like nobody else. The, we all know you can't fit two cars going up there. It's not true that you're going to take away the parking on Shaver Street, but you're going to supplement for it by adding the residents. I'm an expert on how many people, how many cars are per household. I can tell you that a single family with a one bedroom, one bath, and a husband and wife have a minimum of two cars. The lower the income, the more cars. The lower the income, four Toyotas, two that they're working on somewhere, will be parked all over the street. So they're not taking away and adding more. There's going to be 360-plus cars for that building, that belong to that building, for the residents, just on the basis of average. I mean, there's people in Marin that have four cars. Some of them will have four cars. So all those cars coming in and out. I can also tell you that if they're coming out of that building and someone needs to go in that building on the size of their door, because they have the same size door, you can't go in and out. So somebody's going to back up on the Shaver. And that's where we're getting accidents and people getting hit. There's fistfights out there. There's glass on the street. I pick it up every single day. I'm definitely an expert on parking because I own the parking on the West and the Fourth Street. I have to take the parking away now. So there's going to be no more parking for the merchants. There's going to be the street parking going to take away on Shaver. We've got 48 cars on that parking spot already that we're all poaching on because there's nowhere to park. Those 48 minus all the Shaver streets, plus the extra 180 cars for the 180 places they have, the second cars that they have for their family.
Thank you for your comments.
Nowhere to go. So the parking is going to go away in San Rafael.
Got it.
I gotta take the parking away from everybody. I gotta take the parking away. I went to the city and it's, it's become survival. So the danger factor is people are going to get hit left and right. You can't make it south.
Please feel free to follow up and write us an email, but we need to keep moving. I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
That was a good comment. I'm Neil Zimmerman. I'm, I'm at, I've lived here for 35 years in a single-family residence near the Rob West End. One of the things that you talked about was safety concerns as being something that's a big deal. So I thought the bicycle egress and ingress was a huge safety concern. I'm a bicyclist, have been for years. There's accidents all the time. I think that this should really be considered for, you know, there's going to be hopefully a lot of bicycles in there. So that's one thing. Also, the fact that the architect mentioned that for family space, like park space, the roof, well, that's a safety concern if you've got kids playing on an eight-story roof. So I think those are two critical safety concerns that should be addressed. Also, just the height is, you know, it's, okay, we have all these state mandates, but does that give us, you know, the, the aesthetic or the community kind of drive to just say, oh, well, whatever, we'll roll over for this? So I felt like we were being bullied by Riley here, talking about, you know, things that made this feel not like a democracy, not like we have a say in it. So the state mandates are made for good reason, but they don't consider the communities. So I'd like the community to have a little bit further say in the exact project. So just a couple of things there. And then the design, you know, I, I disagree. It's, it's a mediocre design that I've seen a million of, and we need something a little bit better. If we're going to put eight stories in, let's make it look decent. And this doesn't. There's, there's too much of that. So that's all I have to say. I just urge the people to, to really come out and, and oppose the height on this project. I don't oppose more housing. I just oppose the height in this particular neighborhood the most. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Kevin Gavney. Thank you for the time tonight. I've been up here for a quarter of a century, raised my family. My wife's got her business here. I'm in the food and beverage industry and I really wanted to get up here and tell you guys how I feel so bad for what has happened to Fourth Street. These are the exact kind of projects we need to revitalize San Rafael. I mean, I hate going up north to go spend money. We're not getting any tax revenue from you. We're going to other towns to go have a good time. I really want to see San Rafael downtown come alive again and we really are missing it. You know, I got two younger kids as well. There's no way they're going to be able to move back to this area without projects like this. My parents are getting older. They want to downsize. This would be a perfect place for them. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of negatives. I just want to bring some of the positives. This is needed. Okay. I mean, it started at 11. It's down to seven, right? I think that beautiful building is perfect, but everyone has their own views. I think that's a beautiful building. So I just want to give my my 10 cents for it and.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's, my name's Bruce Carlson. I have lived in Marin for thirty, almost 30 years. And the, one of you brought up a good point of, you know, what's the vacancy rate in San Rafael? And one of the, regardless of what it is, what happens is that when we get new product, new housing, it creates more affordable housing. And, and, you know, for our policemen, for children wanting to move back, for seniors and it's, we really, we really need the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bill Carney with Sustainable San Rafael. Good to see you all this evening. We are, we support this development. The housing is much needed. The density is welcome in this key downtown location where more residents will activate the street, support businesses, reduce greenhouse gas by making walking, biking and transit attractive ways of getting around. We're also pleased that the building will be all-electric, EV-ready, and provides a potential for rooftop solar panels. We urge the developer to plug into clean MCE electricity and to install the solar during construction. No doubt, the design of the building would be improved by stepping down its mass towards the smaller buildings in the West End, while perhaps allowing more height at the E Street intersection. The recommendation of the design review board takes a modest step in this direction by breaking up the mass with different colors and materials. The setback at the top floor also helps reduce the building's scale. Importantly, the good-sized maples along Fourth Street and columnar oaks along Schaefer are especially important to help scale down the building. The city needs to assure that these or similarly sized trees are retained as well as the thoughtful landscape design of the Fourth Street sidewalk, including the widened areas and seating. The constraints placed on the city's design review process by the developers' use of state bonuses cry out to the city to strengthen its objective design standards for future buildings. Finally, Sustainable San Rafael continues to urge the city to derive greater public benefit from such large buildings by returning its inclusionary housing standards to 20%, reversing the recent reductions to 10%.
Bill, thank you so much for your comments.
And that would pay for itself if they were moderate income units. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As a 45-year resident of West End, I would like to express my dismay at the lack of foresight you have shown in allowing this project to get so far down the road. Maybe you don't live here in San Rafael or just doing what you think is right in order to satisfy the state of California's mandate to create more affordable housing. Maybe you actually believe this project is attractive. First of all, the size of this project is jaw-dropping. It will tower above all other buildings along Fourth Street. It will dwarf what is already there and stick out like an ugly reminder to everyone that the design department has lost its priority for keeping a sense of proportion throughout the entire town. This project will cut out the sun for a good number of buildings in its shadow. Second, this project does not reflect any other style of architecture in the city of San Rafael save for brand-new, completely out-of-character Marriott Hotel. Neither of these buildings had the charm once deemed one of the highlights of our town. So many of the older buildings have been demolished. The older buildings in San Rafael are what give its character and charm. It's not too late for you to move your aesthetic needle to include the concept of architectural beauty. Third, there exists a parking problem in downtown San Rafael. Even with many parking lots, we've run out of space. Just to find a place to park and grab, to grab a bite to eat, this project is only going to exasperate the existing situations and there are not really enough parking spaces provided on the grounds for the project. Four, who is going to be able to afford the asking price? It will go up in the five years it will take to do this. We're seeing a situation in Marin similar scale and it is already obvious that the longtime residents will not be able to afford the rent. So this is not really affordable. It's another masquerading. Fifth, for some reason, the business district of Fourth Street has come to the conclusion that this project will increase their in, their income. Perhaps it will, but I doubt it. Thank you for your consideration of my input. I love this town and carry about its future. However, the choices you have made have stunned me and upset me recently. This project takes.
Thank you for your comments.
It really does.
Hi, my name is Susan Bradford. I've been a resident of San Rafael for 45 years. I was a shop owner on Fourth Street at 1560 Fourth Street. I'm an elder. I'm low income and I'm a renter. I know this neighborhood well. I've always lived in the West End for 45 years and I love it. There's nothing sustainable, healthy or community building about this project here. I thought San Rafael was trying to call itself a green city. Doesn't feel like that. Thirteen out of 162 units that will be below market rate is essentially meaningless. I'm just going to make a few points here. It's way oversized. It looks like an institution. It looks like it belongs in San Francisco. It's way too tall. Three to four stories, period. That's it. This is very unhealthy for community. Too many people packed into one place is not healthy. It is not community building. Where are all these cars going to go? 179 cars, good. Where is the other 179 cars going to go? As a shop owner on Fourth Street in the past, I used to have customers who would say to me, I drove around the block three or four times, never could find a parking spot, finally left, never came shopping with you. Okay, where are these cars going to go? You are not thinking of the Latham and the and the Schaefer people. You are not thinking of the shop owners in the West End. These, these units are probably going to be exceedingly overpriced. You aren't really thinking about the people who need housing, who can't afford those kind of prices. You're not providing for them. The increased traffic problems in that area of town is going to be insane. It is completely out of character.
Thank you so much for your comments. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hayden Ongaro. I manage a commercial real estate company here in San Rafael. We chose downtown San Rafael as our office location because it's the perfect blend of services, convenience to getting to all over Marin. And I am a supporter of the project. I think it's placed in the right spot. I've spent my whole real estate career, over 30 years, working with owners, working with tenants. And there was a lot of discussion years ago about the both sides of San Rafael. Downtown San Rafael versus West End. And owners in West End used to feel like they weren't connected to downtown. I, I think I disagree with some of the comments. I think if I were a business owner and you told me 160 units were going to be filled at my front door, I'd figure out a way for that to help my business. If I'm trying to hire employees and you're going to have housing right there where people don't need to get a car, I would be in favor of that. I've seen a lot of studies, in fact, one that John presented years ago about driverless cars and where we're going with cars and parking. And I think we, you know, we all need to look at the future and housing demand is not going away. Housing demand is going to increase. We need to fill housing. Parking, cars, hard to say where that's going to go. I appreciate the comments on EV charging and bikes. I see a lot more of it. I think if we're going to have housing, we need to have housing. If this project were put up on a hill, people would say it shouldn't be on a hill. It should be downtown. This is downtown. It's in an area, West End, that I think will help and I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi there. My name is Joe McKellum. I'm a downtown San Rafael resident and I'm here on behalf of the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce, where I serve as a board member and I chair the Economic Development Committee. As you know, the chamber represents nearly 525 Marin County employers with over 26,000 employees across 25 industry sectors. I'm here today to express our support for the 1515 Fourth Street mixed-use development. The creation of housing continues to be a top priority for the San Rafael Chamber. Given our high cost of living, our local employers regularly identify housing availability as their main concern as they attempt to recruit and retain employees. We need to add local housing supply in a meaningful way. Through years of collaborative effort, the city of San Rafael adopted its forward-looking downtown precise plan in 2021. The San Rafael Chamber was part of a diverse cross-section of local stakeholders who actively participated in this meticulous two-year planning and engagement process to help shape the future of our downtown. Overall, the precise plan seeks to advance the city's goals such as increasing housing diversity and equity, improving walkability and transportation choices, and advancing resiliency to climate change. The key theme of this vision is to transition our downtown core into a thriving, people-oriented environment. Without question, the driving factor to implement this vision is the creation of new housing within the downtown. The redevelopment proposal at 1515 Fourth Street will replace a vacant former bank building with 162 new apartments. These housing units will be filled with residents who spend their days and evenings walking to local restaurants, shopping at our stores and creating more foot traffic along Fourth Street and beyond. Businesses that formerly relied on foot traffic from employees in full offices are welcoming new residences, living and working in the downtown core. This, along with projects like it, are exactly what our local businesses need to thrive today and into the future. The San Rafael Chamber encourages you to approve the 1515 Fourth Street proposal to advance our vision for downtown San Rafael as a mixed-use environment with these critical new housing units.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Hi Commissioners, thank you. Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Frank Prair and I'm a 25-year resident who lives four blocks away from this building. And I got to tell you, I've been living in the West End a long time and the guy two ago said something interesting. The West End is not downtown. It's totally different. And it has been, but it's not like downtown and I can't use the right word to describe it. Businesses have constantly rolled through there. We've had businesses go out of business all the time and I actually support this project because I think we need the extra people there. I go to the Mayflower all the time. I can't believe the Mayflower can stay in business, right? There's some nights where they can't get anybody there and I talk to the owners. They have a hard time and some of those places down there have a hard time. We need the extra people down there, right? We have a homeless issue in San, homelessness issue. We got to make sure that it's safe. And I got to say what Mr. Monahan said about making sure the spaces are open and protected. I'm terrified of the homelessness. This is getting worse. Okay, we have to fix that. And I feel bad for the homeless because we are not protecting them because we are afraid to police them. That's another total issue. Finally, I'm a business owner and our business is downtown, in the real downtown, up by, up by A Street. And I got to tell you, I can't hire people that can find a place to live close by with a decent place to live. It's just miserable. So I have people commuting from the East Bay and that's a nightmare, right? It just, we don't have any good options. So we need to fix, we need to give some housing. We need to enliven the West Side. I need some housing for, so we can hire some good young people, including my kids that want to come live back here, but they can't afford to live in Marin. It'd be great if there was an apartment that my daughter, who just got married, could move into with her husband and be nearby. Would be amazing. So I clearly support this project and I know it's a tough situation. That's it.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is David Hayden. I own Il Dovede Restaurant in San Rafael. I'm a lifelong resident of San Rafael. I just want to express my support for the proposed apartment development on 1554 Street in downtown. This development will stimulate local businesses like mine, offers housing for a workforce like mine, and sponsors local artists in the civic lobby. It's also be a fantastic addition to Fourth Street and to San Rafael. I'm tired of looking at San Rafael. I've been here for 39 years as a businessperson and it's dead. It's dead. I go to Walnut Creek, it's buzzing. I go to the city, it's buzzing. I go to other, Santa Rosa even. There's, there's parts that are really revitalized. As a business owner, I'm speaking for all the restaurant owners in San Rafael right now. We need development. We need housing. We need more people to come downtown. And the homeless, there's three guys sleeping outside your building right now. I have it in front of my restaurant all the time. That's another issue, but I believe in this. And Mr. Monahan has done so much for the city. You have no idea. Thank you.
My name is Jay Cross. I'm a commercial real estate broker based in downtown San Rafael. Been here for 12 years and my family of three have lived in nearby San Antonio for the past 17 years. While it is true that this project will help make a dent in San Rafael's RENA, very, very aggressive RENA mandates required by the state. I think much more than that, this, this deal just makes sense. It really makes sense for downtown San Rafael. It's really going to help revitalize, make it a more dynamic place for, for people of all incomes and ages, individuals, families. It really just makes sense. I really hope that you will vote for this project. Thank you.
I just want to remind everyone, you can adjust the height of the microphone.
Thank you. Good evening Commissioners and thank you for hearing from all of us. My name is Kim Yakovo. I used to live in downtown San Rafael, but I moved further away because I could no longer afford it. I'm a behavior interventionist and most of my clients reside in San Francisco. I prefer to use public transportation to commute, but once I moved out of the downtown area, I bought a car. I would love to move back to the downtown area to have a better work-life balance, but there aren't many housing options. 1515 Fourth Street is the type of place I would absolutely live. The location has great access to public transportation. It's right along the bus route and it's a 10-minute walk to the smart train, which would make my commute a lot easier. I hope the commission can consider people like me and votes to approve this project. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Virjit Karlin and I work for Karlin and Associates, an accounting firm on Fourth Street in San Rafael. I was also born and raised in San Rafael. I support this project and think it should be approved. I currently commute from San Francisco, but it would be amazing to be walking distance from my office downtown. Speaking as a younger person in the workforce, there are not a lot of options for affordable housing in the area. It would also be incredibly beneficial for our company to help attract employees, something we're currently struggling with. The design is tasteful and it's well fit. It's well, fits well with the downtown area. I hope you approve this project.
Good evening. My name is Carol Page. The density bonuses predate the autocracy in Sacramento's legislative stifling of local control. What is left is what you see here tonight. Disappointed, angry, disenfranchised people from the neighborhoods affected. The Democrats that are speaking to you are pretty clear. The people who live here and are threatened by the hazards created by this project have written you. If you have been reading those comments, you have that. I couldn't list them in two minutes. But if you have read it, you know you have ammunition. You are not helpless. I hope that among the skills that earned you the seat on the commission are integrity and courage, attributes that enable you to say, this project is still too big. If you approve the project as it is, you are approving profit over people. If you approve the project as it is, you are approving profit over people. The project is a test case. It pushes all the buttons, destroying boundaries needed for well-balanced, judicious planning. Please say no. Use the chips that you have because the consequences are grave.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Matt Jacobs and I grew up here in San Rafael. Spent my whole life here. Thinking back on a pretty fond memory I had as a child was when Coldstones signed their lease on Fourth Street. We would come here time and time again with our family, create memories. There was a real heartbeat in San Rafael. Over the years, I've noticed that heartbeat has slowed and it's really challenging seeing such a tough situation in our metropolitan area of San Rafael when we have this amazing, beautiful community around us. We look at Mount Tam every day. We go for bike rides. We take walks. We have great weather. And now there's, there's nothing in central San Rafael that's really bringing that lifeblood back, that heartbeat back to where we need it to go. Tom's team has a track record of success. There are millions of developers who have failed. He has a track record of winning and succeeding and making developments for the community. And that's exactly what he's doing here and will help bring that heartbeat back to central San Rafael that we need. So again, I fully support this project and hope to see it through.
Hi, Andrew Davidson, G Street. I have heard some really great public comment tonight. I think I appreciate that. I think we're stuck with this building and so let's try and make it as good as we can. If possible, let's have those green infrastructure on the roof. I think that would be great. The table two for bicycle street parking or bicycle parking, I don't think that's quite accurate. I don't think there's a way to have bicycle parking along the perimeter of the wall between the wheel stops. The vehicles are just going to get scratched and damage the cars as they're pulled in and out. So I think we should revise table two to make it realistic. The entrance and exit on Shaver, I think that is a concern for that street. Perhaps that 18-inch landscaping proposed along that edge of the building is not going to be adequate to protect pedestrians. So I think that needs to be looked into. The architectural set is missing sheet A 4.1, which did, was supposed to show cross-sections. It would be nice to see those and to see those extend across the street, just to get a hint of the relative size of this new building with the existing. A shadow study would have been really helpful, how the shadows will cast across the street, how it will affect vegetation and neighbors. I am curious about the below-market rate units and how that will be enforced. I know there's going to be an agreement that will be recorded, but how, how is it enforced for the next 55 years? I think that's, that's something that we're giving up, allowing, or this building should be much taller, partly because of that. Lighting, does the street lighting conform with the International Dark Skies Association's recommendation for lighting? There's plenty of light on Fourth Street in that area. There's two light standards with four lights right there. The rendition shows a lot of light coming horizontally out of the building. I'd like to know what we're going to be doing about that to help minimize that. Hopefully, the system will, or the building will include gray water systems for onsite cisterns or landscaping for summer use. So thank you.
Hi, my name is David McSpadden. I live up in Fair Hills and I am one of the people who is concerned about the, the scale of the project. I think as many people have said earlier, I'm not opposed to density. I think downtown could use more people living downtown. I'm support the 2040 vision overall conceptually. I think what we're seeing is that the 2040 vision combined with the state density bonus law is creating a scenario that I don't believe was intended in the 2040 vision. That block is supposed to be a transition block from the West End to the downtown area. It's sculpted primarily as a 50-foot building. It's now going up to 70 to 80 feet. That wasn't the vision of the 2040 vision. So I don't think there's a way to, to Riley Hurd's milk curdling hubris aside, to stop this. And the developer is within his rights to objectively seek the waivers that he's seeking. But I think we need to think about what's the future of the city look like and was it the intention of the 2040 plan to have nine-story, 11-story buildings going from A Street all the way out to E Street? Because that's the long-term implication of this. Every building that transfers over can go to 11 stories. And I don't think that's the, the vision that we plan for. Yes, we need housing, but we need to do it with some architectural integrity and transition. So my, my request would that you go back to the city council and ask the city council and the mayor to review their designations and perhaps change the zoning laws that are the objective criteria that the developers are using. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine. I posted concern about this issue on Nextdoor and there were 22,000 views last time I checked. So a lot of concern over this issue. I'm not, I'm not against building housing at 1515 Fourth Street, but the proposed structure is oversized and architecturally unsympathetic to the surrounding neighborhood. I believe that local businesses deserve the opportunity for increased customer traffic, but it should be with a thoughtful design, sensitive to the West End environment of one to two-story buildings. I worry about the immense size of the project. It would tower over the West End, looking completely out of place. It needs to be modified to a scale that which suits the surrounding buildings with a setback in appropriate landscaping. It should harmonize with the small-town character of the neighborhood. I'm also concerned about the cars, which everybody's been mentioning, up to 300 cars clogging Fourth Street and surrounding neighborhood streets. I support housing on this site, but I worry about water hookups. We're just coming out of a drought. We might have more drought, lots more drought to come. So how are we going to hook up water for more units? Please maybe consider postpone this decision so we could have more insight on the issue and more studying, for example, of the rental units. I just wish you would postpone this monumentous decision. It would mean a lot. Thank you so much for your thoughtful questions before too. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Kerr. I agree with you that it is a hemoth. It's just a massively outsized structure. But what concerns me, more importantly, is that there's no environmental review and it's exempt. So all environmental review, all CEQA has just been eviscerated, from what I understand. That is very concerning. And it looks to me that the only people who are really going to benefit with such a small portion of affordable housing are going to be the developers. And that's, that's what they do. It's a completely for profit without concern for the community. So if this is built, it's not, you know, it's, it's a major, major decision. It's going to change the whole face of the West End. And it's only a beginning. So if that goes in, it's like, it's going to be way out of scale. Your privacy, sunlight, peace and quiet, parking, everything that I moved from San Francisco to here to enjoy, that's all going to be decimated. So the West End's profile will be forever marred. The apartment vacancy rate rose to 4.2% according to the Marin rental market and it's softening in 2023. There's also been an exodus of people who live in San Rafael and 250,000 people left the Bay Area during the pandemic. So I think a lot of these figures are based on pre-pandemic, you know, they think they need to be reevaluated. And I I would like to see that the community plans be restored. So there is at least some community input. You know, everybody's just left out of the loop and decisions are being made for us and that's not democracy. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lou Langlamay and I live, I've been living in the area for over 75 years. Any rate, a lot of expressions have been put out and a lot of ideas. Great. Good to have conversations like this. I really challenge that traffic report. Let me tell you, I double dog dare anybody in this room to go down to Latham Street, Shaver Street, and a lot of the other smaller side streets that are substandard and you can't pass two cars at a time. I dare you to find a parking space. And looking at the plans, yeah, we're going to lose a couple on Shaver, which is horrible to start with, and supposed to be gaining them on Fourth Street. Well, it looks like the sidewalk's bumped out and there aren't any parking spaces, according to the photos. So I think that's a little goofy. So having two holes in the wall on Shaver is ridiculous to have approaching 200 vehicles try and get in and out. If there's two more holes on E Street, that might get, make it a little more feasible. So I suggest the engineers get off their tail and do a better design. I see glass on the street all the time too. It is a safety concern. Two more vehicles, approaching two more, 200 more vehicles is a big time problem. And not only for Shaver, Latham, Fourth Street also, Third Street also, because those are the feeders. And I've seen it backed up now. Water, it was mentioned before. We were told to conserve, not wash our vehicles in the driveway. How are we going to supply water for what, 300, 400 people? That might be a problem. Any rate, there's a lot more consideration to this project that needs to be straightened out and fixed, I think. Thank you.
Good evening. My apologies for my interjection earlier. I'd like to follow up on Mark from McCain, Mark from Kane's Tires. There's a liability issue to the city for, for all the mayhem that goes on, on Shaver Street. You've been warned about this. It will be appealed on a number of, of points. But I'd like to start with my note here, and since there's nobody in back. I'd like to read from Bob Dylan. Upon Housing Project Hill, it's either fortune or fame. You must pick one or the other. Neither of them are to be what they claim. Today is a dark day and I don't imagine it's going to get any lighter. Our world is moving faster than humans are able to adjust and respond. We tend to shut down as a means of self-protection. During COVID, people naturally retreated into a protective shell. All the while, our city planners crafted, crafted this cutout for Monahan Pacific or, or the like. In rare cases, there's an example where this shell breaks. I hope today the shell breaks and the planning commission has the courage to walk out. Doubtful. Ask yourself what leadership means. The president made a special trip recently to the Ukraine denouncing authoritarianism. He spoke truth to power, but according to recent Pew studies, faith in government is at a 50-year low. Wonder why that might be. While you were asleep, your cherished West End was betrayed by the people, people you trusted. Say goodbye to your privacy, parking, sun, safety, and most importantly, the illusion of representative government. That's why people are leaving California in droves. The costs of corporate socialism, which this is, all these bonuses and, and waivers. Socialism, all these costs of corporate socialism to the soul are not as quantifiable as what appears on your tax bill or in an obtrusive.
Thank you. If you could please wrap up.
I'll finish. Monahan Pacific is reaping the rewards of years of spin about housing crisis when faith in representative government is disappearing by the day.
Thank you for your comment.
I said I'm going to finish.
No, you can add your comments. You can email your comments to the city. This is part of decorum. If you would like to add, we've read every single letter. I'd, I'd ask you to submit that.
No, I'm not moving.
Sir.
This insult to the public changes everything. This confirms my cynicism. This is time, this, it is time for us, my family, to leave San Rafael. I don't want to leave San Rafael. My identity, my purpose here is, but my kids have moved. My wife and I are going to follow and take care of the next generation elsewhere.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have been a resident in Marin County for approximately 50 years. San Rafael for 45. I'm dismayed with the shape of downtown San Rafael. I see this project as, as a benefit of revitalizing the downtown area, the West End area, which has only seen a lot of turnover, a lot of homelessness. I realize that there has been a lot of back and forth tonight about Monahan Pacific making money. To do a project of this size, it costs money and X number of units have to be built to support that. I mean, there are things that I've seen in San Rafael that have turned my stomach, which have supposedly been a benefit for the area. The Smart Train, which we see no one on, which causes umpteen delays in traffic in big getting across the city, and no one's complaining about things like that. So I am in favor of this project. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. So I was born and raised in San Rafael and have always wanted to move back to this area, but it's been increasingly difficult to move back just because there's no housing supply. I have friends that grew up and went to San Rafael, went to Terre Lindum, Marin Catholic, and none of them are moving back because right now there's just nowhere for us to move. The vacancy rates right now are at 4.8% in this area. And when you look at the rest of California, people are moving out, but this stays so low because there's just no supply for us. So there's really no opportunity for us to come in. And I think really is with us young business professionals coming in is that we're going to shop at the stores, the restaurants, maybe eat a little too much soul food. But we're also going to be using the art gallery space. So I think that this is a great opportunity for, you know, call it 200 new people to move into this neighborhood and to really stimulate the economy. So I'm fully supportive of this and fully supportive of this fully compliant development. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Ritter. I live on Forbes Avenue in the West End. I'm not in favor of this project for a lot of different reasons, traffic and many others, but I want to touch just two things. I agree with the gentleman who made the comment that this is not what the Vision 2040 was, was anticipating. Now, I understand it's got the T450 zoning, but, and the Precise Development Plan allows this. I can see the calculations and I, and that's true, but that didn't envision, the Precise Development Plan did not envision an eight-story building with all of these impacts. And by the same token, the EIR, as you say, which was approved, I don't think it anticipated this level of impact or the growth inducing impacts that this is going to cause as required by CEQA. And similarly, it, it doesn't require a comprehensive traffic study because of, again, I guess the Precise Development Plan. Well, that was before SB 35. That was before all this density bonus information, requirements came down the pipe. So I agree with this gentleman that I would like the city to take a serious look at the steps to, to look at this area. This is not downtown, this site. Fourth and, and Lincoln is downtown. The BioMarin buildings are downtown. The new eight-story Vivalon building, that is downtown. And it might be appropriate down there, but it is not appropriate here. And I'd like to see the city take a, a hard look at revised, taking a hard look at the zoning and the Precise Development Plan or whatever it takes. I don't know the steps and I don't know the legality of it. But I think, given the concern in the community and these impacts, the city should take a hard look at that. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else in the chamber that hasn't had an opportunity to come up that'd like to speak? No? Okay. Let's see. I'm guessing we have some people on Zoom waiting patiently.
Yes, very patiently. So thank you.
So thank you all.
I wonder if, no, we'll wait. I'll, I'll wait till 9:30. I think if we get to 9:30, we can take a five-minute break unless any commissioners feel like they need to take one right now, or staff. Okay. Yeah, let's, let's keep going and then if it, if it goes on, we'll, we'll make sure to take a break for everybody.
Okay. If you would like to speak and you're attending virtually, please use the raise hand icon and/or star nine if you are phoning in. And, oops. So phone number, yes, you have two minutes to speak.
Okay, hi. My name is Nancy Okada, and I am very concerned about this. First, I'd like to say that the planning commissioners asked very, very good questions. They have some questions in their mind about the legitimacy of this. This, this building is just too big. It's too massive. It'll cast a big shadow, as one of them said, it's a behemoth. And you only have 13 below market rate units after they were given 22 with the bonus density. Why aren't there more market rate units? This thing needs to go back to the drawing board. It needs to be shrunk. It's, it's a huge, huge block of Soviet-style building on a very nice corner of San Rafael, not far from the library. This is absolutely outrageous. Please, planning commissioners, have the integrity and courage to send this thing back to the drawing board. There's no water for it. And where is the water table underground with the subterranean? You're going to have floods of all sorts of proportions if it rains. Of course, it'll rain again, as we saw this time. But thank you for please voting no on this project. Thank you.
Next up is Johnson Reynolds.
Yeah, Johnson Reynolds. I live in the canal. I'm, go to church at First United Church in San Rafael, go through that area a lot. Today I went past that area and I, I did see that, that former bank building and see the possibility for providing affordable housing there. You know, we're very concerned that we have a lot of people who work here and don't live here. 60% have to travel from other parts of the Bay Area to get here to work. I was really taken with one guy who said, yeah, we need to have people that can walk to the, where they're working, the employees in downtown, you know, to be able to walk to the, to the places where they work. And we need to have more possibilities for people, seniors, that empty nesters you talked about, professionals, but we need to have, and I, I was concerned that the prices for these apartments would be very high, like the one at B and B and Second Street that the developer was talking about, they're higher in price. But these seem to be high, better, better in price, 1,500 or 1,700, something like that for the 30, 13 units. That's good. I do agree with Carney that we should have, you know, 15, at least 15% inclusionary zoning. That's, that would be helpful if you can do something like that. Maybe this developer can work with a nonprofit developer to, to ensure the possibility of less height, maybe, and also more affordable units. But we really need to have that. I think, I really am concerned that there couldn't be a community created here with the, the galleries down below and people hanging out and, and the vitality of the downtown. I really appreciate that. It may be a little high, though. We can do that, maybe working with a nonprofit developer would be helpful, but preserving the possibility of affordable housing for people who need it and work in the city. So thank you very much.
Next up is Jenny Silva.
Thank you. I, I am calling in today as the board chair for the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative, otherwise known as MECC. We are a multi-disciplinary consortium of advocates that support more affordable housing done in an environmentally sustainable way and for social justice. And I am here to support the approval of this project. This project is the type of development that San Rafael and Marin County needs to solve its housing crisis and to reduce car dependency and greenhouse emissions. It provides many housing units in a walkable area near transit. High-density projects can both accommodate the housing we need and also continue to preserve the open space that Marinites love. We are glad to see that this project includes affordable units for very low-income individuals. A few developments offer options for this population. This project will improve housing affordability in Marin. Most of Marin's housing is single-family homes, and single-family homes are far less affordable than multifamily housing of similar size and amenities. Further residents will have the option to not own a car. Car expenses are the second largest expense after housing. Housing that enables residents to live car-free are far more affordable than those that mandate a car for everyday living. And this project does align with the San Rafael General Plan 2040 and the downtown San Rafael Precise Plan. These documents address the housing crisis and increased rent at this housing cycle by concentrating growth downtown and increasing building heights and floor ratio allowances. The site is one of the sites that was identified in the plan. And this proposal is exactly what the general plan and precise plan envisioned to address our housing crisis. Please support this project. We need this project, and it will make San Rafael and Marin better. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Next up is Leslie Simons.
Hi. I have lived here in San Rafael for over 60 years. The development of B and Second Street is a, a better example of the applicants, whatever, but it came with a lot of pushing and pulling to get there. I'm not impressed by the Marriott development at Fifth and B. The appearance of this project, 1515 Fourth, is so similar that I fear this will become, this rather banal design will become the standard moving forward for the city of San Rafael. The addition, additional open space was the hope during the precise plan, except, excuse me, except for the part, like, there is no open space. The net zero parking does not consider the current lease space on the existing bank site. I don't remember, I think somebody said it was like 40 spaces. The entire facade on all sides is non-inspiring. At the least, the community, the commercial retail should be differentiated from the floors above. It's just too, not interesting. The historic analysis just run is questionable. Across E Street, the southeast corner at Fourth, is a very important PG&E building, beautiful little building, the only one that survived the fire of 1958. I feel this is just too boring. I mean, it's almost more the architecture that I'm offended by, and, and it's going to become the norm. Thank you.
Thank you for providing comment.
Next up is Kate Powers.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to comment. My comments are to both the planning commission and to the community development department, and I urge you to develop, to develop and adopt objective design and development standards that not only respond to some of the comments made by staff tonight about the fact that there are not a specific objective design and development standards to some of the comments that were made. I think that the, the height and bulk could be looked at in terms of, could, could the maximum height and bulk be for the maximum density and height bonuses? Could it be, include that so that the maximum height and density bonuses are what the maximum height and bulk standards meet? I also agree that shade and shadow studies should be done. I think that more could have been done for the public realm, looking at the streetscaping, the pavement, and other landscaping standards. And I also think that I'm not, I don't think that there's enough community benefits for the impacts to the community on this project. I am concerned that the traffic on the sign-off on Shaver Street, there wasn't enough studies done on what the impacts would be. And I agree with the other comments about the 10% below market. Housing isn't enough. I think there should be more affordable housing in these units, in these large developments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next up is Kay Cartchewski.
That's correct. Thank you, commissioners. I, I was very interested in all the comments there were tonight, and I actually support this building, but I do think the developers need to look at the parking issue. And Shaver, I can understand that that's going to be a very bottleneck. If there's, if a lot of people are using their cars that are parked underneath the new building, maybe they're just walking. But anyway, I have to agree that need a little more study on that and see if you can put the entrance on, for instance, E Street, although I'm not quite sure that's possible. It's like, recall, there's a lot of buildings there. But, so that's my comment. But, thank you. It's been a thrill and very interesting evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Vikram Sashadri.
Hi there. My partner and I are recent San Rafael transplants, having purchased and moved into 201 Shaver Street at the end of 2021. So we are literally at the corner of Shaver and Latham. And as one of the closest neighbors of the proposed project, we are in a great position to offer firsthand insight to ensure that this project successfully enhances the community without being a liability. Development is clearly needed in the area, and we welcome the addition of new neighbors, neighbors and businesses. However, as everybody, as many have already mentioned, there are those key aspects of the area that should be reviewed and studied again before plans are approved. Primarily, the parking entrance, as we all understand, the residential parking entrance is suggested to be on Shaver Street. And as everybody has pointed out, Shaver is narrow and often folded parked cars on both sides of the street near Ford Street due to Kane Tire, Tire Shop's location. Additionally, the bumpouts that have been extended at Third and Second Street makes a very narrow and dangerous passage at those intersections. Also, the traffic lights at Third and Second Streets are poorly timed, leading to frequent traffic backups on a daily basis. The addition of many housing units will also add increased demand for parking from tenants and guests and parking permits. Permit parking is something that should be introduced to protect parking availability for existing neighbors. As much as I support growth and development in our new neighborhood, it needs to be done thoughtfully and with the right intentions. While I also appreciate long-term residents, those who want to return to the area, and business owners who are enthusiastic about this development and the promise it brings, valid concerns of those who will be directly affected by the project, i.e., its immediate neighbors, should be taken seriously as it ultimately is us who have to live alongside the renters this project hopes to attract, and so that we can build this a thriving community that allows for all of us to want to live in together. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If there is anyone else who wishes to speak either in the chambers, come on up, or if you're attending virtually, I ask all to raise your hand using the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen and/or if you're phoning in, use the star nine. And that is the end of public comment.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone taking the time to come out, review the plans and provide comment. We will go ahead and close the public hearing now. Before I turn over to the commission for comment and discussion, I'd like staff to answer a few questions that were, that were provided during public comment. I, I have a list of a few, but if anybody else has any that they think we need to add or your own questions, let's, let's go ahead and add them. The first was really looking at bike parking at Table 2. I, I don't know what, I'm trying to look at that up. So do you want me to go one by one, or do you want me to list them?
Uh, I think one by one might be helpful.
Okay, okay, great.
So bike parking at Table 2, oh, the, the question about i- is this really providing the parking that's, it's indicated on the table?
Yeah, yeah. And can you remind us of the sheet that's on? Because I was, I was trying to look for it, but I couldn't, I couldn't locate it.
I can, I can just share it on, on the screen as well, but it.
Thank you. Yeah, that'd be helpful for everyone to be able to see it.
Yeah, it's starting on sheet A2 dot 0A. So let's see here, let's pull up the plans. So I think, I think the comment was essentially making the claim that because the bike parking, a number of the spaces, so that there is the bike room that has 116 spaces, and then there's an additional, more than 80 spaces that are provided in front of parking spaces in the garage. And so I think the claim was that those are not legitimate spaces. However, you know, we don't have any requirements that would say that they can't do that. So basically, the plan is for these to be assigned parking spaces. And so you have your assigned parking stall, and in, in front of that parking stall, you'd also have your assigned bike parking.
Okay. And is a required parking stall, you know, we have width and length requirements. So would the parking stall accommodate a bike plus the required depth?
Right, yeah, that, that, that would be part of, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's helpful. Okay. And then the next question that I heard was, how is affordability enforced?
I think Ali is.
So, yeah, I can take it. There is a below-market rate agreement that is executed subsequent to this process. There's a building permit process, and part of that will include a below-market rate agreement that is executed with the city. There is annual reporting that occurs, and so we send out notices. We require applicant or property owners to submit their documentation that shows that they are renting to low-income tenants and, you know, per unit by the, by the, by address. So there is a cross-checking that occurs throughout the years.
Okay, thank you. And is there recourse that the city can have? Like, I, I know there's been issues in the canal and stuff with some apartment buildings and people being, I don't think it relates to the evictions, but does the city have recourse if the affordability isn't being complied with?
Below-market rate agreement, there would be, we would, we would include what the consequences would be of not renting to qualified tenants. So there would be, I, I don't have any specifics for you, but yes, we would have that in the.
Thank you. Yeah, that's helpful to know. And then can we, can staff confirm that the project is compliant with Dark Sky ordinance? I'm guessing design review really looked at this pretty closely.
Right.
But it'd be good to hear from you.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. One of the city's municipal code requirements is that all lighting be directed downward. And so staff has reviewed all proposed lighting to make sure that indeed it does comply with that.
Thank you. And then I guess, I don't know if this is really a question that is subjective, but when we're looking at the affordable units, one of the commenters asked why they weren't maximized to 22 and, or to more units. I think it was 22 the number they cited. But is there, can you kind of just remind us of the ratio and how we get to the bonus? And, you know, even if you can put the slide back up, I think it'd be helpful for us up here and then also for the public to just, after all this conversation, be reminded of.
Yeah, absolutely. So I will pull up, let's see, clear screen. So here's the state density bonus loss slide from current slide. So, so basically, there's, the 10% is based on what's called the base project. So that's the project, that's a hypothetical project that meets all the requirements. So that's the amount that they're supposed to provide the 10% of. So their base project's 122 units. So 10% of that, they're providing 13. They are not required to provide. They are not required to provide that percentage as part of the density bonus units, if that makes sense.
Okay. That's helpful.
Yeah. And so in terms of the question, why aren't they providing more or why isn't the city requiring more? Um, you know, that's the city's requirement is that they provide 10% low. So they're going beyond that providing 10% very low income. So they're meeting both the city's requirements and, uh, the state density bonus law requirements.
Great. Um, Leslie, did you hear any more questions that I missed?
Um, no, but someone commented that they wanted to see the traffic study and that is available in the administrative record. So you can reach out to me and or Jeff Valentine, uh, with an email if you cannot find the, the traffic study.
There's a link to it in the staff report too. I know there's a lot of documents. It's hard to find, but, or not hard to find, they're there. If you, there's a hot link on the application within or on the city's website. So you can get a lot of the documents here.
Right. And I'm sorry, also, if you just want to email planning@cityofsanrefel.org, um, we'll make sure to, to send you directly that, a document.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Um, and then I wanted to ask fellow commissioners if they heard any other questions or if they had any follow-up questions. Yeah.
Thank you. I, I had another question a few, um, um, a few of you brought up parking, parking permits for, for folks who already live in the neighborhood nearby. Can you elaborate on, I'm not sure what, what we're able to do there, but if you could comment on that.
So I'll, I'll start this one. Ally can jump in, um, if, uh, if she wants to add something. But I would say if the city wanted to institute a program like that, that would really be something that the city council would have to adopt. And a lot of studying analysis would have to actually go into looking at the existing parking supply and sort of creating that program. Um, and so it's not something that planning commission just connect, could either tight of this project or just decide to. But it's definitely something, um, you could ask, uh, city council to explore.
Got it.
And just I'll add to that. Um, we, the city has not traditionally simply, um, created these types of programs. Um, it's a really serious type of endeavor and, um, so we don't normally do that. I think if somebody was hoping to do that, we would want to work with Public Works, but it's typically not something, it's not the place where we go to.
Um. Understood. So, so that would be separate just, just as the, if we want to look further into Shaver Street and traffic conditions, that would be separate.
Completely separate.
From this project as well.
Part of this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shock. Anybody else have any follow-ups?
Yeah, just a couple. Um, was there a shading study done? If not, why?
No, because there, there are no objective standards that would regulate to what extent the project may cause shadow impacts on, on neighbors. So we would have no basis to require that study.
Okay. And then, um, regarding the lighting study, um, did that include confirming there's sufficient lighting?
So, uh, police reviewed this and asked that they, uh, provide additional lighting, uh, along the frontages, um, and particularly along fourth. And so as part of that, they did provide additional lighting, uh, along those frontages.
Okay. Um, is, is there any way that the city can compel the applicant to use a gray water system?
Not without an adopted, uh, objective standard.
Okay. Um, I was just looking at the precise plan and I noticed that, um, the T four MS 50 dash, or sorry, slash 70 area is, um, it's got a 50 foot base, about 70 foot with bonus.
Mm-hmm.
And I noticed that the size of the building or the height of the building is 76, um, feet with a waiver. Could you explain the?
Right, right. So the, um, that 70 foot bonus you're referring to, that's a whole separate process. That's not state density bonus law. That's a separate process the city has where essentially the applicant wants to provide additional affordable units. They could seek a bonus through that way. However, it's my understanding that it's just, um, more, uh, desirable from the developer standpoint to just do the state density bonus route instead of pursuing that bonus.
Okay. Those are all my additional questions.
Yeah, yeah. Question. Um, uh, developer was exempt from an environmental review. Um, and just, I think it'd be helpful to understand why that was, just to provide a little bit more context on that.
Right. So, uh, the California Environmental Quality Act, better known as SEQA. So that's sort of a multi-tiered process where you gotta go, where you try to figure out if this is exempt from SEQA or if it requires an initial study, if it requires, um, an EIR. So there's different levels you gotta go. And basically the first step is trying to determine if it complies with any of the allowable exemptions in SEQA, which mean that you do not have to provide a full initial study and you do not have to go through a more robust analysis. And so one of those exemptions is called the class 32 infill exemption. And, and basically it's for, for any sites within an urban area. Um, you can utilize that exemption as long as you're meeting those findings. And that's, uh, why this, uh, memo was prepared to sort of show how it meets all those findings that are, that are required for that exemption. Yeah.
I have a follow-up on that. So in the resolution that was drafted exhibit one, I guess the fifth whereas, um, it talks about, you know, we're, we're basically, um, having to judge whether or not it complies with the exemption. So is that the class 32? That just, I mean, we have the SEQA summary separately, but this is just for the resolution, correct?
Right, yeah. So that fifth whereas it lists them A, B, C, D, E. So those are the five findings. And then if you go in further, it's, uh, letter C, starting on page two, that states, uh, the project design minimizes adverse environmental impacts. So that's where it sort of elaborates more. But then in the memo is really where it really goes into, into more detail.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Do you have any more follow-up on that? Okay. Anything else? You know? John? Okay, okay. This has been good. Okay. So, um, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, you know, thank everyone for the public comment again. Um, I know it's, it's a lot of time and it's your, everyone's busy, business owners, community members. Um, and it's good to see so much public engagement. Um, so before we go on to vote on the report, um, the commissioners have an opportunity to provide any comments and engage in discussion. So, um, I'm gonna go down the line in order. Commissioner Shock, unless you want me to start on the other side? We've been on the spot the whole time. Um, so we'll start with you and, um, and then from there, we'll, we'll try to come up with a motion that works.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And just echoing, um, echoing, um, uh, Commissioner Sadi, I think we, um, this has just been getting all of your comments. Um, it's been really, really helpful to understand contextually, um, both, both sides. Um, and, um, the feedback, the passion, the conviction by so many of you has been, um, has been really helpful to understand this project, um, and just how important it is. Um, frankly, I believe where we are in dire need of housing and this building will really help to fulfill that. Um, I, it is new for this area of town and that, um, um, but I also really believe our downtown needs an investment like this, um, in housing to really help revitalize our shops, grow our community and really bring more foot traffic and business to local, uh, local shops and local, local business. I'm, I'm really happy with the fact that, um, that Monahan Pacific is highly experienced in the Bay Area. They've had success, um, with projects, um, here in Marin. They're, they're not new to this. Um, I am, uh, I know that this is separate, but I am concerned about some, a lot of the traffic on Shaver Street. A lot of the, um, the comments that were brought up. Um, and so it's really helpful to hear from, from the city in terms of where we're, um, what we're able to comment on and make decisions on today and what we may not be able to, um, with this project specifically. Um, however, I do want to be sure that we follow up on those items and that we work together, um, to address those concerns separately. Uh, furthermore, I, I think this really aligns with San Rafael's general plan, um, of 2040. Um, and I really like how the ground floor includes retail, a local art gallery, lounge areas. Um, I would like it to provide more, more community space. Um, um, but I know that, uh, that there's, there's only so much space allotted for that. Um, I think those are my, my main concerns are on traffic. Um, but again, I know I can't, we can't make that decision right now. Um, and, um, that's, that's where I stand. I, I'm really excited about how much this can really, um, bring more foot traffic, um, and business to the area and provide a lot more housing for people who need it, um, in the area who work in San Rafael.
Thanks, Commissioner Haidman.
Thank you. And, and thanks, I'll echo the thanks to everybody who came out and, and spoke tonight. I think it's really important, um, that people engage. Um, uh, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about why maybe it's, it's, it's a little late in the day. Um, but, uh, we need more housing in San Rafael, period. Um, we need more density. We need more height in downtown San Rafael. Uh, I do think this is an important development for San Rafael. It adds a lot of housing and a walkable space. Um, uh, this one and projects like it will add some needed life and economic vitality to the West End. Um, however, I think it's unfortunate that our first foray into really increasing height is in this location. I think it's jarring to the neighbors, um, both in concept, and I think it will be, uh, in its reality. There's a world in which we could design the city for ourselves. Um, if we lived in that world, we might not approve this building in this location. We might approve it in a location closer to what is more commonly thought of as downtown. Um, but we don't live in that world. All right, we live in a world where cities and citizens have restricted, uh, resisted residential growth for decades. Um, Prop 13 is at an effect where cities are prioritizing retail over residential. Um, when new developments come up, traffic concerns have, have played a role in preventing they're really being developed. Um, but as a result of these objections and the, the goals of cities and trying to maximize their revenues, um, we find ourselves in a world where we have objective standards and our subjective desires and standards, uh, don't necessarily play a significant role. Um, in this world, the one in which we live, California has a massive housing problem. Uh, it's in its infinite wisdom or wraps out of desperation, uh, state legislators have significantly reduced our local control. And so we're here today. It's frustrating, um, but it's likely going to reduce the housing crisis that our state is currently in. Um, unfortunately, the West End may wind up being a little bit of a victim in the world in which we find ourselves. I do have worries about the implications for local residents. I have worries about traffic, significant worries about Shaver Street. It has the potential to be a disaster. I worry about parking. Uh, I worry about the height and the impact that it might have on the community. But at the end of the day, uh, it's gonna help solve a lot of problems. It's gonna help solve housing problems generally. It's gonna have workforce housing specifically. It's gonna help to grow the economy and provide stability to local businesses. Um, so I do support the project. Um, I'm really anxious to see, uh, how it's, how it impacts, uh, the city. Um, but I do also think that the city, um, has a bit of an obligation to try to mitigate some of the impacts of this project on the local residents, whether that's parking permits or something else, I don't know. Um, but we should also spend a, a great deal of time trying to figure out how over the long term, right, perhaps we're not quite as straitjacketed as we are today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Haidman. Um, Commissioner Purvatali, would you like to give?
I agree with those comments. Sorry, I agree with those comments. We need a building like this. Um, uh, I, I don't think it's a fully baked project. I'm sorry to say. And the reason that is, is because of Shaver Street. Um, I would like to see, um, a, a comprehensive solution that includes, um, basically whatever needs to be done to fix Shaver Street by the city, right? And this building. All right. So unfortunately, I feel like, uh, I'd like to slow it down a little bit and ask the city to do what they need to do to plan for, to plan and budget and, um, you know, ensure Shaver Street is, is ready to go when this building is, uh, is ready to go. So, um, I, I don't really have any more comments other than that.
Thank you. Um, okay, I guess I'll go. Um, tonight, uh, first I want to thank staff. Uh, you did a very, all of you, including Leslie, um, behind the scenes have done a tremendous amount of work to, um, you know, review this application, work with the owners, work with stakeholders in the community and, um, throughout the city. Um, this building, um, the people that work in this building to, um, vet this project and, uh, make sure that it is not only meeting the standards, but working with us to help us understand, um, what we're actually, um, working with. Um, I also want to thank the applicant because I know it's been a long process and, um, it's hard for developers in San Rafael because, um, like Commissioner Haidman said, we've, we've really cycled development for a long time. Um, and, um, unfortunately, um, it's been a hard road, but we're, I'm grateful to the applicant for putting together that, um, building. And I, I actually think, um, given the size, um, and despite that harsh wall and fourth that I'm not a big fan of, um, the articulation and the balconies and, um, some of the street, the lower podium portion that opens to the sidewalk is, is gonna be really nice for that street. Um, tonight, we're being asked to approve this project based on specific objective standards listed in the staff report. Oh, um, this project is the first of its type. Um, one where the discretion the city maintains is limited. Um, you know, we're looking at the downtown precise plan, objective standards from the general plan and standards mandated by the state density bonus law and SB 330, which is the Housing Accountability Act that we looked at um, on one of the slides. Um, the findings that we're asked, um, to make in the staff report exhibit one are adherence with objective standards, um, from the general plan, adherence with applicable sign criteria for the district, um, that the project is exempt from SEQA and the project is not detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare. Um, nor material interest to properties improvements in the vicinity. Um, the project meets these criteria and together with the conditions approve, with approval, I believe it's the, um, with some other comments or some things that we'd like, I'd like to see added. I think the, uh, resolution is ready for adoption. Um, I also want to add some things, just some background, um, where I'm coming from on the project. And I think the other commissioners have done a really great job. I think, um, the four of us here have very different backgrounds and expertise. And, um, it's been evident that the questions we've all asked have been really, um, it's, it's been great to hear questions that I didn't even think of. So, um, I appreciate that. And I also appreciate all the public questions and comment because it's really allowed us to look at the project in a more meaningful way and how the, how really the state density bonus laws, um, combined with, um, our, um, downtown precise plan are really gonna shape the future of our city, for better or for worse. Um, the 2040 general plan is a plan, is a product of a multi-year process. And specific downtown precise plan is a product of a wide range of community engagement events, including Papa workshops, focus groups, multi-day charrettes and engagement with the general plan steering committee. These are documents that the city has adopted as a guide for how to, San Rafael will implement the community's vision to create opportunities for reinvestment and future development that is feasible, predictable and consistent with the community's priorities and aspirations. Um, I think when the, when these documents were made, it's correct, like, we didn't have SB 330 or SB 33, or we did have SB 330, but SB, SB 35. So it's hard, it's hard to reconcile that, I think, as, as the commission and probably the city. And, you know, prior looking, looking forward, Ally, I don't remember what year it was, but we did look at trying to, um, really get the objective standards, um, more buttoned up in, in the, um, anticipation of these kind of projects. Um, and we, we did our best at the time. I don't remember a lot of public comment on it. There was like groups, but we didn't really have a lot of engagement. So I think, you know, I personally would like to take a deeper dive, deeper dive into those. And I think the commission does as well, um, to see how we can really, um, meet the vision that we want and, um, kind of create those standards to help get that. But I think overall, um, this project really does, um, meet the vision regardless of its height. I mean, the height's high and it's a big bulk. Um, but I do want to thank our community for taking a vested, vested interest in the future of our city. But I do want to thank our community for taking a vested interest in the future of our city. We heard from you through letters, 101 meetings, text exchange, phone calls, and tonight via public comment. This public process is vital in ensuring we grow in the way that will ensure pedestrian, a pedestrian-oriented and well-connected downtown that enhances our unique built heritage. A downtown that will increase our resilience to climate change, provide a day-to-night urban core that will be safe and inviting, and promote housing access at all income levels and stimulate investment. I think a lot of, a lot of the opposition to the project is concerned about the type of housing that we have and the scale. But if we were to create the amount of units that we're seeing in this that we need to have out of single-family housing, that would then impact our open space. And it would impact the beauty that we're trying to preserve in San Rafael. And I also think it may be hard to see that the generation that is now looking at being first-time homebuyers don't have the advantage of the, you know, the income to housing cost ratio that those have bought in San Rafael 30 years ago, 50 years ago. And it, those, those economic impacts, those larger forces are really requiring us to be, to see change in how we house people. And so we want to see young people here. I want to be able to have my, my kids be able to move back and live here. I want to be able to see businesses stay in San Rafael because they can hire people that can walk and live in a place that's, that's vital, vital, vital and viable. The Forest Street corridor, including the West End and Transit Hub areas, are designated as areas of heightened density. The strategy ensures that San Rafael's growth and is, remains in its downtown core. Density will allow for us to continue enjoy open space in Marin. It will create more sustainable and affordable options for housing. And it'll create a path towards enlivening our downtown and allowing businesses to open and stay open. I, I personally have made a huge effort to shop and eat in San Rafael and do business in San Rafael. And I walk downtown and I try to bring my kids downtown. And it's, it's hard to see the, the vacancy rate and to walk through and see past storefronts that are empty. And if we continue to really resist a more mixed-use environment and a denser environment that's sustainable and that's connected to transit and that's walkable, we're going to see that degrade. And we're not going to really see the future in San Rafael. I think this real, this project really helps solve a good number of problems. I do agree, Shaver and Latham Street are, they've been pressed. I mean, we saw a project on Shaver Street that didn't come to life. And we heard from a lot of Shaver Street residents. And it's, it's challenging. It's challenging to see that the overall, you know, that the change is going to create, you know, ripple effects. But those are issues that our town has to tackle and deal with. And we can't really stall growth because we have other issues that, because, you know, there's issues around us. We have to really figure out how to solve those and allow our, our community to grow. I think that's pretty much all I have to say. Again, I want to thank the commissioners as well because you guys, a lot of effort has been put in the preparation and a lot of time. And I know that I've heard from some, some of my fellow commissioners and we have spent a lot of time looking and reading all the comments and looking at the applications and talking to staff. It's a tough one, but I think it's, change is hard. And I think this is a step that our city has to make. So with that, I think that we, you know, we'd like to move on to entertain a motion.
Actually, before we do that.
Yeah.
Did we, do we have to add anything about the Design Review Board?
I was going to mention, yeah, I was going to get into that. Yeah, I think we, we, when we're looking at the.
Do we add that to them?
I think we would add that to the resolution. Is that correct?
The designer, yeah, the designer.
It's in the resolution, right?
Yeah, it's already in there as a condition of approval.
Okay. I was looking for that as well at the last.
It's a condition of approval number three on page five.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that the, the Design Review Board had some valid points. And I think those should be part of the conditions of approval as well. And then looking at the, I think, looking at, you know, what the requirements are for public works. They're not really, maybe addressing all the comments that the public has had. But, you know, I think those are things that we need to look at outside of this project as well. Does anyone else have any, anything that they'd like to change or modify in the resolution? No? Okay. I guess with that, I'll entertain a motion.
This is Commissioner Haidman, and I will move that the Planning Commission accept and endorse the resolution that's been put before us.
As amended tonight, as presented tonight with.
As presented tonight, yes. Thank you.
Can I have somebody second that motion?
Commissioner Shock, and I will second that motion.
Thank you. Leslie, can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Mercado is absent. Commissioner Privatoli?
No. The reason is because Shaver Street, there's no Shaver Street plan. So, as I mentioned.
Commissioner Shock?
Yes, yes, I would like.
Vice Chair Haidman?
Yes.
And Chair Saudi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the Director's Report.
Great, thank you. I also want to just thank, I know most, most people left, but thank you all for coming and for those who will look at the recording. So thanks for participating. I have some black roses. So just a few commissioner updates. We are having interviews for the new Planning Commissioner next Monday in front of City Council, as well as I forwarded you, and I should have printed out beforehand, but several of you, a few of you have had your terms extended for a period. So that's very exciting. And I think that affected definitely Commissioner Shock and Chair Saudi. I'm not sure it affected the other ones so a little bit. So that's good. We have a little reading room to, well, both to enjoy your company and your, your sage discourse, as well as to have time to have robust recruitment for new commissioners. And the other thing is, in two weeks, we will have another Planning Commission meeting. And that will include the draft housing element that has been revised based on comments that we received from HCD, as well as zoning change amendments to the, to zoning changes to, on two properties to comply with the general plan that was adopted. There might be a third portion of that.
What type of, what type of projects are those? Are those like the zoning change ones?
Yes, the zoning changes will, would you mean?
Like, what's the project type? Are they retail or commercial or housing?
So the, the projects that are coming, we, we just kind of lumped them into one packet for you. But the two sites are, were identified in the general plan as needing to be, the map needed to be amended. So the general plan reclassified those in order to keep the general plan, the zoning consistent. We now need to bring those zoning amendments forward. And the sites, one of them is a residential site. And the change is just a, you know, change from, I think it was a planned development district to R20 zoning. And then the other one is currently light industrial zoning designation and will be, the proposal is to amend it to an office designation.
Okay, thanks. I was just curious. So we're, we're just making it compliant with the general plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that is the end of my Director's Report. But the actual director is here, if she had.
I think Commissioner Shock had a question about that.
Yeah, apologies, yes.
No, sorry. It was unrelated. So I don't know if, it was more in regards to public works and how do we, what's the process, the next steps there? Is that something the city will do or is that something we follow up on?
In terms of increasing?
In terms of, sorry, the Shaver Street and the concerns that were brought up today. Is that was identified to be separate?
Right. So as part of the project specifically, when it is submitted for a building permit. So remember, Public Works has already reviewed the plans as submitted and presented tonight.
Yes.
However, when it goes through the building permit stage, there are additional changes that will happen to comply with building code requirements, fire code requirements that require tweaks. At that time, Public Works will have another look at it. And, you know, Jeff will be the project planner and we'll be in discussions to ensure, since we aren't the traffic engineers, we, we do rely on their expertise to ensure that there are safety. Because the, the city is not, you know, the city wants a safe city. So it is something that we, the city takes seriously. So it will be reviewed robustly, so.
And that'll be provided to the public within, I don't know, so many. Like, I, I think folks will want to know when, when that'll be followed up on, essentially.
Right, right. And so, yeah, as Leslie was saying, it'll get vetted more thoroughly as far as the building permit stage. So when that process happens, so if any of you ever want to just kind of check in and sort of see what the status or have us sort of report back at a later date, more than, more than happy to.
Thanks.
I do want to set expectations, though. That isn't a public process. It's, we don't, you know, this is, this is the public forum. And after this, there's a, a more kind of internal process that happens. We don't send out notices. We don't, we try to provide updates in our, on our website. So if applications come in, if they're delayed or, you know, whatever the situation is. I think if you look at our website, for example, for the AC Hotel, we have like an update and expected completion date. Those types of things are in there. But we don't send out notices when a building permit comes in. So I want to make sure that there's not that expectation that the community members will be notified of those things.
Thanks, yeah. I think that's helpful.
Thank you. And then I have a question about Wild Care. Are we going to see that soon? I thought we were going to see it today and I, I know it got tracked down.
No, and you have the actual project planner here. So he can give you a more accurate estimate of when it will come before you.
I'll, I'll just say there, we're actively working to address some public works matters. So, so that'll be fully baked, to use a term I heard tonight. So, yeah, hope, hope to hear it come, come soon.
Awesome, thank you.
Apologies if I offended anyone.
No, no offense taken.
I have one topic that I wanted to bring up. And Ally, this is the one that is near, near to my heart, Northgate. So I would like to just sort of like test the waters about bringing a motion that I would propose in written form.
Can I interrupt?
Oh, yeah, please.
So we can't, no, it's not on the agenda.
Oh, I know.
We won't be able to talk about it tonight. I think if you get into any conversation, that could be considered a meeting and puts us in that five-meeting arena.
Oh, but this isn't a meeting, though. I mean, this is just a topic, right? That.
I would be really, I've been cautioned about that. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any type of conversation about it tonight. Perhaps you can, yeah.
I'm just talking about the logistics of community notification.
Perhaps we can talk offline. I mean, I, I would rather not have a conversation that would put us in a situation where we're limited to the five meetings. And, you know, I'm, I'm saying this in consultation by our attorney. We shouldn't be having a conversation about a project that may be limited in the number of meetings.
Yeah, I guess I, I don't know what to do because I don't want to meet on it. But at the same time, I want us to be able to have information about the status of the project.
I can tell you what the status of the project is. And it's not, we haven't received a complete application.
Yeah, I mean, I just, it sounds like you don't want me to talk about it at all, like the.
I'm concerned, yeah, I'm concerned. I'm happy to answer if you wanted to reach out. I know that you've sent an email and you have questions.
I've sent you, anyway, a number of emails. I mean, I, and I know that my, the spam filters were checked and my emails are getting through.
Yeah, your, your emails are getting through.
I mean, and I hopefully, hopefully they're not too assertive or whatnot. I'm just curious, I just am confused as to why.
No, I just haven't gotten to it. But I, I'm happy to have maybe, maybe a phone call. Would that work?
Yeah, yeah, I sent you my calendar a couple of times. I hate to having, be having this conversation right now, but it's been like three months.
Yeah.
So I know you're busy, but like, this is really stressing me out that we're not, that I'm just not being able to communicate with the city about this huge project.
Yeah. No, I, and my apologies, John, my apologies. Sorry, Commissioner Privatoli, my apologies. I would be, yeah, I, you're on my list. I would be happy to, in fact, why don't we connect tomorrow and we can talk about?
Okay, great, fabulous, thank you, appreciate that.
Does, do the planning commissioners have any communication that you want to update us on? Any communication? And I guess that, that concludes our meeting. This meeting is adjourned.